It'll take me just a minute to get all this set up. I can hear you. All right. I'm renaming everybody that's in right now, so it'll show council member or mayor Protem or mayor.
Change our names.
Okay, I need to send the new link to Lisa.
Council members, are you able to hear?
Someone just texted me, "Are you all zooming from home?"
Yes.
Yes, we are, and you can see our home. My unsecured room.
Council members, are you able to hear now?
Joseph is literally trying to find my best light right now. He has...
I like that.
Oh my God, we're not starting the light.
Council members, are you able to hear?
I know it's like interrogation light on. We have to hear.
I could... I couldn't find the beauty thing. I tried, Kristy.
Can you hear us, council members?
It's in preferences.
Was he out there? Is he there?
Okay, it's in preferences, video.
Okay, are you able to hear now, council members?
We can hear you, yeah.
Wonderful.
Can they see us?
They cannot see you.
Okay.
No.
In shadow.
Do you have the... Are you ready, Anthony? Okay, Mayor, the clerk is ready to go at your convenience.
You ready? Okay. So, good evening. I hereby call Palm... Okay, we're echoey. Aaron? Let's try again. Good evening. I hereby call Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of April 2nd, 2020 to order. City Manager David Reddy will please lead tonight's pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance...
To the flag...
...of United States of America... ...and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, please conduct a roll call.
Councilmember Garner.
Present.
Councilmember Middleton.
She's muted.
Councilmember Middleton is present. Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Mayor Protem Holstich.
Here.
Mayor Coors.
Here.
All council is present.
Great, thank you. City Manager, do we have some presentations?
Yes, Mayor, we have one presentation, and I understand...
We're calling the... Mike DiToro, the president?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, we're going to call Mike DiToro. He's the COO of Desert Regional Hospital, and he's going to give us a brief update of the hospital, what they're doing with regard to the COVID.
Mr. DiToro? Oh, DiToro, you are on the line with the city council.
Yes, you're live.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, great.
You can begin your presentation when you're ready.
All right, so I'm going to cover for the group what our Desert Regional Medical Center plans are for a surge of patients that might come. And I'm going to start off with the emergency department. Currently, we already have a segregated workflow for patients that would show up to the hospital. The plan is to keep anybody who's suspected to have the virus segregated from the regular population of folks that would come through. We have a segregated and isolated area that we care for them in the emergency department that's basically quarantined from the rest of the patients. And we're identifying the patients currently outside of the building with a triage nurse who gets them routed to this special location. If we got to a moderate surge for the emergency department, we actually would have the ability to care for 20-plus patients in a triage area outside of our cafeteria, kind of on the backside of the emergency department, that has its own special entrance into the quarantined area inside of the building. If the surge got severe, we would add some tents outside the emergency department, which would really be able to... We'd fit 12 to 16 patients in each tent. We would probably plan to put two of them up at that time. So that's really what the emergency department flow looks like. We've, on the inpatient side, added 55 critical care beds. So our total capacity for critical care would be 86. We've turned specific units that were medical surgical beds before over to critical care. And additionally, we've added 99 negative pressure rooms in the hospital. The negative pressure rooms are the ones that have the unique special airflow designed to vent directly outside to keep our patients safe, to keep the team members, physicians, nurses, caregivers, safe as well. We've added capacity, we've added numbers to the vents that we would use to care for patients. We can actually use anesthesia machines as vents, and we've worked with the local community, various surgery centers, to see what pieces of equipment they would allow us to borrow if we were, if we needed it. So we've added capability with our vents, and we've also added patient monitors, which are things that we would also use for critically ill patients that give you telemetry monitoring, cardiac monitoring, blood pressure, what have you. And then for a surge on the inpatient side, if we had a mass influx of patients, the idea would be to add as many possible beds inside the four walls of the hospital as possible. We know summer's coming, so we would want to not do any care outside if at all possible. Currently, I think it's important to point out, it's unseasonably low, our census right now. We're at about 2/3 of where we would normally would be. So if we were to get a surge now, we would be able to care for patients in beds where we traditionally care for patients. If it got to the point that those got saturated, in our moderate inpatient surge plan, we could add an additional 130 beds. We would... We have different locations throughout the building where we could add beds onto existing units. We could also use waiting rooms or offices, various areas that we have space that we could convert over to beds if need be. And then in our severe surge plan, we would further add another 75 beds in the four walls of the hospital. And if we got maxed out at that, which at this point we're over 200 additional beds, we could then put tents up outside. We've got 18 tents that can fit up to 12 patients comfortably in all of them. At that point, if we were outside, we would certainly need to consider how we could cool these tents, what we would need for bathrooms, washing your hands, what have you. So we've got the capability to surge up quite a significant number of beds to care for patients. Certainly, we would want to keep them inside, as I mentioned before. So I'll pause there. I kind of threw a lot out at you. Do you have any questions for me?
I have a question. I know I've seen that you've gotten a number of donations for supplies, and I was just wondering if the community should know or the city should know of any supplies. or the city should know of any supplies that you also need or that your workers might need.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Uh, you know, PPE, we're dealing with national shortages like everybody else's. Today, we don't feel that we're in a position where supplies are an issue. You know, our census really for the... For the suspected patients or patients that have been positive have kinda been running around the mid-20s for the past week. And we've got current supplies that can last several weeks at the rate that we've had. If the surge does come, we are constantly evaluating our policies and how we're using the supplies and where and when and how frequently we replace them. So those are things that we would take into consideration. But as far as masks and gowns and face shields and the things that we really need, we don't find ourselves in short supply today. And we've certainly worked closely with the county and various resources to bring in additional supplies as we've needed them.
Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, your staff...
Anything else?
Question?
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, your staffing... How are you in terms of your capacity to handle the surge of patients?
So, you know, again, with the way the volumes are now, you know, we've got the staff that we need. Our Chief Nursing Officer and our Physician Leadership Teams have been working on our surge plans and how we could bring staff in. A lot of that, you know, as... If more of a focus becomes on the COVID patients, we see other services within the hospital slowing down. So we have plans on how we would either train the nurses, the caregivers in those areas to help care for these types of patients. We've working and went from our physician team. We've done some work on bringing telemedicine providers in that can help us. Um, and we're also looking at volunteers out in the community and where we could potentially even bring folks from outside of the state if necessary. You know, I would say that that side of bringing on the personnel is probably a little more daunting task than having the physical side of the hospital ready. But we do have plans and how we would execute that to bring more folks in.
Thank you.
Any other questions I can answer?
Um, I don't think so, but thank you so much. Really appreciate the update, and thank you for all the great work the hospitals do. Really appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Thank you much, and my pleasure. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.
Any more presentations?
Uh, that's the only presentation, Mayor. I would note that, uh, we will be providing an update with regard to all the COVID issues later on on the agenda, under the Agenda Item itself.
Great, thank you. Before we get into acceptance of the agenda, I just wanna mention, obviously, I'm video conferencing and, um, in separate locations. And what I'm gonna do, just so we can make it easier both for the public who's listening and for council members and staff, is every 90 minutes, we'll plan to take a bio break, uh, so people can plan around that. I set alarms for 90 minutes, two of them, and we'll see if we need to do more, but just so folks know. So thanks for, uh, bearing with us, since we do this for the first time, but it's gonna be probably just wait for a little while here, and hopefully this will work out well. So our next item is acceptance of the agenda. The City Council will discuss the order of the agenda. They amend the order, add urgency items. No extensions or no votes on consent calendar items or request consent calendar items to be removed for separate discussion. I believe the staff wants a request for an urgency item to be added. Uh, City Attorney Ballinger?
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, subsequent to the posting of the agenda, the Riverside County Council requested that the cities clarify the authority of the county health officer to act as the city's health officer within their respective jurisdictions. Uh, this came to the attention after our agenda was posted, and there is obviously an immediate need to take action, so we'd request that that resolution be added to tonight's agenda.
Great, um, thank you. Do we need to do a separate vote on that?
A separate vote that is required to be passed by a 4/5 vote.
To add that to the agenda. Is there a motion to add the urgency item to tonight's agenda? Don't move.
I'm in.
Okay. Your roll call?
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Coors?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Great, thank you. I would also like to recommend that we move Item 4A, which is the discussion and the update on coronavirus, COVID-19, from the end of the meeting to after the consent calendar and before public hearings, given I think a lot of people are listening for that reason. Can we do that by consensus?
I agree.
I agree too.
I agree.
Okay. Okay. Um, so now I'd like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda with those two pages. Are there any items council members would like to remove from the consent calendar for separate discussion or vote?
I had...
Go ahead, Councilmember Garner.
I just need to note that I need to recuse myself from Item 1E. And then I did have some... I didn't wanna pull 1F. I just wanted to pull Item 1E for separate discussion.
The 1E and 1F? Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so we get a motion for the modified agenda with Items 1E and 1F pulled for separate discussion.
Don't move. A second?
Councilmember Garner?
Uh, yes, sorry.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Coors?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Great, thank you. I'd like to request, Attorney Ballinger, provide a report on the closed session, please.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, members of the public, the City Council met in closed session earlier this afternoon to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda. There was no reportable action.
Okay. Thank you very much. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You are asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you're speaking about. Please note that the testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing and general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. Tonight, the City Clerk will be contacting speakers via telephone. City Clerk, please begin.
The first speaker will be John, and let me get... Non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Hello, John?
Yes.
Hi, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council Meeting. If you could please start with, um, reducing the volume from your TV so that we reduce the echo. And also, if you could please state your name, and you'll have two minutes to begin your comments.
Okay. Hi, this is John Kirchdorfer, 4455 E7 Lakes Drive, Palm Springs, California. Uh, I am the President of the Canyon Sands HOA, and I was wanting to thank the staff for their work on the Parker expansion, and especially after talking to, uh, the Assistant State Manager today to be pulling the Engineering Condition 51 from the consent agenda. Everyone has done a great job. The Parkers worked well with the neighborhoods here, and we could probably not be more pleased with the outcome that we have seen from this. So I just wanted to actually thank everyone for their work and everything put into this project. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, and we'll disconnect now.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Simpkin?
Yes, speaking.
Uh, you have two minutes to make your presentation to the City Council, and you can begin now.
Thank you. My name is Peter Sipkins, and I am, uh, the President of the Melody Ranch Neighborhood Organization and a member of the Board of Directors of Seven Lakes HOA. I'm also the Treasurer of One PS. I'm gonna speak tonight, as did the prior speaker, on behalf of the Parker Hall Project, but I wanna speak against the supposed traffic solutions proposed in Engineering 51 in the absence of a normal traffic study and neighborhood input from those affected by the proposal. First, for the reasons I expressed in writing two weeks ago, the Melody Ranch Neighborhood Organization Board of Directors strongly supports the Parker Hall Project. Secondly, less than two years ago, the city engineer did a traffic count in a study and determined that none of the measures which are in Engineering 51 met the city's standards justifying implementation. Third, the Parker Hall Project is anticipated to add very little traffic to the two streets concerned, namely Seven Lakes Drive and Cherokee. Fourth, as Mayor Coors and other City Council members have consistently and rightfully expressed, neighborhood involvement and consultation on matters particularly involving the neighborhood, in this case, Melody Ranch, is very important on traffic issues. Fifth, none of the city staff recommended any of these traffic or parking controls at any time at any public meeting or any of the numerous private meetings which Melody Ranch has had with the Parker representatives, representatives of the three neighboring HOAs until Engineering 51 came out tonight. Sixth, the implementation of speed feedback signs on the north side of Seven Lakes may necessitate the removal of hesitation. I'm not sure that the city has jurisdiction with respect to that. Seventh, the city has always sought input from affected neighbors. In fact, the city website itself says that community livability through traffic calming, and in that case, the city of Palm Springs has a traffic calming program that authorizes city staff to work closely with neighborhoods to implement various devices to slow down and/or deter cuts for traffic and reduce traffic speeds on qualifying streets within the city. We support that neighborhood involvement be utilized here and that the neighborhood be involved with the city engineer in doing proper traffic studies before any of these are implemented. And we do not see any rationale for connecting the Parker Project with all these traffic concerns since the Parker Project... Yes.
Uh, your time is over.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello, this is Betty.
Hi, Betty, this is Anthony calling from the City of Palm Springs City Council Meeting. Uh, you have two minutes.
How do you do?
And you can begin your comments when you're ready.
Okay, my name is Betty Flad. I'm a resident of Seven Lakes, and I'm also a board member for VI Resorts who owns and manages the Oasis Resort on Cherokee. I support the Parker Hotel Project for many reasons. First of all, it brings the neighborhood stability and a use which is compatible with existing neighborhood dwellings. Secondly, it eliminates the distracting events on vacant yards which create sound and visual disruption to surrounding neighborhoods, particularly with large weekend events. It also establishes a world-class presence for Palm Springs and the Melody Ranch neighborhood in general. I am very concerned, however, about something I learned today regarding traffic calming restrictions which are being proposed to be added as a condition for the approval of this permit. Traffic recommendations as proposed are, right now, very speculative, and they're premature. Traffic calming proposals should always be approved by those who reside in the area, not added as a condition for a development approval. Once the development is operational, then Melody Ranch communities can come together, look at the traffic and the parking concerns, and suggest solutions. Until then, traffic calming measures are arbitrary and speculative, and in my opinion, should not be a condition for development approval. They should always traffic... Any solution to a traffic problem, I believe, should involve the neighbors who live in close vicinity and should not be backed or not be tacked, excuse me, onto building permits and approval process. So I'm very much supporting the development as proposed by the Parker Hotel. I'm very opposed to the traffic calming recommendations that have been proposed and attached to this proposal. That's the end of... That's it, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, we'll disconnect now.
Thanks.
Hi, this is Rick Miller.
Hi, Rick Miller. Uh, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council Meeting, and you have two minutes, and you could begin your comments when you're ready.
Great, thank you. Um, I would like to say that traffic problems have been present in Melody Ranch in the vicinity of the Parker Project for many years. Two years ago, the City of Palm Springs did a parking... Did a traffic study, and we were overwhelmingly justified in doing traffic calming measures, including parking or, uh, traffic pillows as well as feedback traffic signs. They are warranted 70% of the traffic speeds on our road. This is an old problem that we have been continuing to seek to solve. The expansion of the Parker Hotel will only add to this problem. It's not wrapped into the Parker permit. It's a problem that's existed for many years, and we have been working with the neighborhood to have it solved. The residents of Melody Ranch have weighed in, and overwhelmingly, we are supported in solving these traffic problems. Now, I wanna thank the city throughout this process that has worked with residents to solve the problems that we already have and will only be exacerbated by the expansion of the hotel. We are in process when working with the city to solve these problems. However, we should not be held hostage but for getting these safety problems solved by some residents that will not acquiesce to these problems. Now, I think the process has been very good, and I appreciate traffic and engineering, as well as City Council, uh, for working with us. And we hope to see this through. We appreciate the measures you have taken, and we think this is a very successful project. So thank you, and we hope you consider, continue with your... The process, thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now.
Hello?
Hello, Off Top?
Yes, this is him.
Hi, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council Meeting. If you could reduce the volume, if you're watching this live, and you can begin your two minutes when you're ready.
Uh, thank you, Anthony. Good evening, uh, Mayor and City Council. This is Off Top Dara, and I'm here representing not only the Hilton Palm Springs but the Palm Springs Hospitality Association and PS Resorts. And the purpose of my call this evening is to support the new construction of the Parker Hall Project. In my opinion, Parker has been a great citizen to our city for the past decade plus. In my opinion, they're also the largest transient occupancy tax generators and the most successful product that we have in our city. And the project they are embarking on, which is the Parker Hall Project, I believe it's about 30-plus million dollars. $30-plus million. That project is being self-funded by the Parker family. As you all know it, unlike some of the other projects currently that we are facing and challenges, the Andas, the Dream, and the other project which currently is going off my mind, we should, and I would love to see this project this evening unanimously get approved. That'll be a huge boost for our tourism industry, especially knowing and under the current challenges that we are all facing. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Optab. We'll disconnect now. Hello, Mr. McDonald.
Hi.
Hi, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council Meeting, and you can begin your two minutes when you're ready.
Thank you. Thank you again for hearing our project amid this pandemic. I don't know if we're going to return to this later when the item is discussed, but happy to provide comments. As you can hear from other comments, directly adjacent communities remain divided about opinions on which elements of traffic engineering should be incorporated into the area. The Parker agrees that traffic speeds are important to address and wants to be a part of the conversation to address speeding within the neighborhood. However, the Parker strenuously objects this modification in Engineering Condition 51 related to roadway engineering issues that are unrelated to and are not impacted by the Parker's 32-room project. Even if peak hours, based on our consultant's engineering study, the project impact of, on traffic is limited to just 13 total trips. The Parker is seeking to make a significant investment in the Palm Springs community that will bring jobs, economic activity, and tax revenue to the city at a time while this country is moving towards economic turmoil. Placing additional costs on the project for traffic engineering that is unrelated to the project carries the risk of causing hotel ownership to reevaluate that decision. We strongly request this new adjustment to ENG 51 conditions be reconsidered to avoid putting our project at risk. Thank you for your time, and I can be available if there are any further questions as this item is discussed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McDonald, and we'll disconnect now. Hi, Jeremy. This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council Meeting. If you could please state your full name, and you'll have two minutes to begin your comments.
All right, good evening. My name is Jeremy Ogul. I'm a registered lobbyist speaking on behalf of my client Ace Parking, and that registration is on file with the city clerk. Speaking on Agenda Item 1J regarding the contract with ABM for parking at the airport. Given the circumstances of the pandemic and the unusual format of this meeting, Ace is asking that you pull this item from the consent calendar and delay any vote on it until we get back to normal or something more close to it. We're talking about a $4-million contract that is in dispute. We feel we could better present our case at a more typical meeting where we could show slides, illustrations, bring one or two of these employees who, for years, have been faithful public servants at the airport. That said, regardless of whether you choose to vote on this tonight, we ask that you reconsider the staff's recommendation. And there are many pages of legal letters in your packet. We'll try to summarize those concerns in just a couple of minutes that we have here, but it basically boils down to this. ABM failed to comply with the requirements of the RFP. They submitted a proposal that does not properly show their staffing levels for multiple hourly positions, and their cost proposal simply does not add up. In February, we attended the Airport Commission meeting and explained this issue, and the commissioners expressed concern and asked that the item be delayed and brought back to them, which has not happened yet. So, at the very least, we think you should bring this back to the Airport Commission for further review before taking a final vote tonight. And in a moment, you'll hear from Steve Burton, who's the president of Ace Parking, who can shed more light on those concerns. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Burton.
Yes?
This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council Meeting. If you could please reduce the volume.
Yes.
And, like, two minutes, and you can begin your comments when you're ready.
Isn't it going right now?
No, it stopped.
Oh, okay. All right. Hello, good evening. My name is Steve Burton. I am the president of Ace Parking, speaking on Agenda Item 1J regarding the contract at the airport parking services. Ace Parking has been a airport's parking partner for over 14 years. During that time, we've helped the city generate tens of millions of dollars in revenues, support airport operations. We've had no issue with the city, and we consistently get positive reviews and feedback from airport commissioners, customers, and commissioners, actually. Having been at Palm Springs International Airport for 14-plus years, Ace has gotten the operations down to a science. We've made the operation as efficient as it can possibly be. It's why we are so surprised to see ABM propose a labor cost that was so much lower than ours. When we looked into their numbers, we quickly figured out why. They had failed to comply. As a result of that failure, they appeared to have miscalculated the RFP required operating hours, or the hourly rate, by a significant margin. We got into the details in our appeal letter, which is in your packet. After we shared these concerns in a letter, city staff asked ABM about it, and ABM's short reply was basically said, "No, we guarantee the numbers. There's nothing wrong with it." The RFP and the addenda were abundantly clear. Respondents were to include staffing schedules. These schedules were absent from ABM's proposal, and they led to errors that have ABM an unfair competitive advantage. They failed on the only RFP item that was a minimum requirement, staffing hours. With the current state of the COVID-19 emergency we're in right now, we don't expect you to deep dive deep into this issue tonight, so we're asking you to delay the discussion until a more appropriate time. The contract decision needs face time between all parties to resolve. It also needs to be brought back in front of the Airport Commissioners unanimously voted to extend our contract and requested to be involved in the decision process. Thank you.
Mr. Burton, thank you.
Yes?
We'll disconnect now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hello.
Yeah.
If you could please reduce the volume so that we could reduce.
Yeah, I'm going to mute it. Yep. I thought I muted.
Mr. Burton?
Alright, let's see. Requested to be involved in the decision process. Thank you.
Okay. Now, you'll have two minutes to begin your comments.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Ed Leonard. I reside on Ramone Road in Palm Springs, and I'm here to speak about Item 1J. I've been an employee of Ace Parking in Palm Springs since October 2011, and I'm number five on the seniority list. You have two employees that have been here since day one. I retired from my previous job as an off-airport operator. I was VP of Operations, but after a while, I realized I missed the work, but not all the travel involved. Plus, I hated the snow back in Massachusetts. So, I had known Steve Burton, President of Ace Parking, from my previous job, and he offered me the Palm Springs opportunity. I've worked at many airports around the country, and I can tell you that Palm Springs has been a class by itself. As manager, and after 2016, due to my health issues, any hours of location needed to be worked. I've worked with airport staff and believe we did an exceptional job serving the travel public at that time. As a resident, we are all dealing with an unprecedented situation with the current pandemic, and I would suggest a delay until a better and calmer time can be had. As a resident in Palm Springs and on behalf of all the Ace employees, I would like to recommend to the city council to take some time to make an informed decision regarding the parking concession contract for the airport. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now. Hi, Jim. Mr. Madaffar, if you could, if you're watching the meeting live, reduce the volume. Otherwise, you'll have two minutes to begin your comments.
My volume's reduced. And so, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I am Jim Madaffar, and I'm a registered lobbyist speaking on behalf of my client Ace Parking, and that registration's on file with the city clerk. I'm speaking regarding Item 1J, which we requested to be pulled from the consent agenda. Ace, as you've heard, is a California-based firm right here in Southern California, in, at airports in the United States, including San Diego International and Phoenix Sky Harbor. They're fully capable of continuing to provide outstanding service at the city and the public in Palm Springs. And in fact, the proposal included new ideas for additional ways to generate revenue at the airport. As you heard from Steve, there's some significant concerns about this $4-million five-year contract that's on a consent calendar. And unfortunately, the fact that we can only participate by phone limits our ability to have a full discussion about these issues. We'd much rather prefer to be with you in person, and that's why we urge you to continue this item. Perhaps more importantly, as you heard, the Airport Commission has also not had a chance to fully consider the issues here. At their last meeting, the commissioner said they were very concerned about the inconsistencies that we identified. They also questioned why the city would go through the disruption of switching parking vendors all for a savings of less than $24,000 a year. And they voted unanimously to have the item returned for further discussion. That follow-up discussion has not happened. The Airport Commission has not recommended adoption of this proposal. Voting as a city council tonight would mean ignoring the very group of people who are charged with advising you on airport matters. Given the unusual COVID circumstances and the fact the Airport Commission has not had a chance to finish its work, we ask, at a minimum, that you continue this item until the Airport Commission can further review it, and only then have it agendized for discussion with all parties in the room. We thank you for your time.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now.
Yes, it is.
Hi, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council Meeting. You'll have two minutes, and you can begin your comments when you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Scott Hutchinson. I'm a senior vice president with ABM Aviation. I would like to first express our appreciation for the opportunity that we are being given to provide service to the City of Palm Springs at the airport as the selected parking management service firm. ABM Aviation is a wholly owned division of ABM Industries, which is a 100-plus year company which started right in California and has grown to be a Fortune 500 company trading publicly on the New York Stock Exchange. We are committed to following all the rules and policies set forth, and as a public company, we are committed to opening, open and transparent accounting practices and so forth. We are truly committed to providing the services which we have been selected for. My division happens to oversee over 40 airport operations across the country, including curbside management and parking at such airports as Los Angeles, International Airport, JFK, LaGuardia, Newark, DCA, NIAID, and many others. We're very proud of our smaller airports where we've spent 20-plus years in Long Beach, 20-plus years in Wichita, Kansas, and Oklahoma City. So, we're very tuned to the needs of small regional airports, and we're excited about the opportunity. ABM is committed to hiring existing staff wherever possible. We just got through a significant transition last night in Charlotte where we've taken on more than 250 of the local employees and brought them into the ABM family. We commit to do the same here. We are very much aware of the living wage obligations within the state of California, and we are committed to honor them. I think that as staff has had a chance to review our proposal, they found it to be complete. They found it to be fully aware of all the nuances of the operations at the airport, and we're very comfortable with our ability to perform. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now.
Yes.
Yes, if you're watching this live, if you could please reduce the volume, and please state your full name, and you can begin your comments when you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Matt Busquet. I am addressing the proposal before you.
All right, good evening. My name is Matt Busquet. I am addressing the proposal before you tonight regarding tenant rent, Item 3A. As a resident and member of the community for more than 20 years, I've been proud of our progressive nature. It's with that background, I express my profound sadness to become part of a stereotype and stigmatized group in our community, local landlords. The effort to create an enemy in a crisis often happens, but to choose a group of residents to become the enemy is surprising. With all the needs of our community and emergency order to protect the people from the evil activities of property owners like myself, it's disappointing when there's nothing to suggest we would be acting as you implied. Perhaps all the landlords should be rounded up and put in the old Japanese internment camps to keep the population safe from the evildoers during the crisis. I'm speechless that the drafters of the proposal say there is no economic impact to passing it. It must have been the fairy godmother of economics to come to that conclusion. Businesses would not be required to pay their back rent until the dead of summer when no one has any cash, yet there's no economic impact. How can that possibly be true? You're all smarter than that. At the exact same time, the government itself operates in the opposite way. Over time, our city has issued dozens of proclamations expressing support or opposition to various issues around the Grove, yet it remains completely silent on the activities of the Riverside County Tax Collector right down the road. Tenants are publicly urged not to pay their rent and mortgages, but the city seems silent while the tax collector is demanding all your residents pay their property taxes by April 10th. Why, they say? Because they need to pay their employees. How is that right, especially for the non, the employees not on the front line? Why should they be paid their full salaries while the entire community is shut down? The website makes it very clear, they are not offering your community members an effective, simple way to delay payment. They don't want to announce it because they're afraid people might not pay. So, public pronouncements not to pay your rent because the government believes it costs them nothing, but when it comes to paying property taxes, the government demands, so the government can pay themselves, they do nothing. I urge you to, I urge you to lead on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll disconnect now. Hello, is this Julius Tefor?
Yes, this is Julius Tefor.
Hi, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council Meeting. You'll have two minutes to begin your comments, and you can begin when you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Palm Springs City Council. My name is Julius Tefor. I'm a resident of Palm Springs. I reside in the Gallery Apartments. I'm a resident leader speaking on behalf of my neighborhood apartments. My neighborhood apartment is primarily occupied with working-class residents, and we have seen the current crisis impact the livelihood of my neighborhood. The working families are now facing with the reality of being laid off from their jobs and having to find ways to provide for their families, myself and my family included. I have been laid off from my job at the Palm Springs Airport due to the safety of our community. We have been forced to live through an economic hardship that burdens the financial future of our working families. The anxiety of trying to provide food, shelter, and health have increased in our communities. We're asking the council to provide, to please consider providing city policies that work for our now displaced communities in Palm Springs. I understand that there is a moratorium postponing evictions is being discussed with the council, which my committee is in support of. However, I'm here to also support and stand in solidarity with California Partnership and other great organizations, and we are asking to, one, don't require residents and commercial tenants to write letters to their landlord, because most people will not know that there's a moratorium in place. Two, to... Two, to rent us forgiveness, or at least a year payment plan for both commercial and residential tenants, pass the COVID-19 emergency plan. Three, to direct the Palm Springs City Manager to demand appropriate government agencies and private companies to suspend the continuation of water and gas and utility service for non-payment for a period of 90 days, or to extend that time.
Yes, that's your time. We'll need to disconnect, but we do have your written comments, and they've been provided to the council.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, yes, hello?
Hi, is this Eric Lemus?
Speaking.
Hi, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You are live, and you have two minutes to begin your comments when you're ready.
Thank you, Anthony. Good evening, Palm Springs City Council. My name is Eric Lemus. I am with California Partnership. We're statewide economic justice coalition. I am here because I'm here to advocate on a local level to ensure that our communities that are impacted by health and economic inequities be heard, and bring forward regulations that impact our displaced communities. I am the Coachella Valley Organizer with emphasis in the East Coachella Valley. We also have coalition partners here tonight with us on the phone via phone, Biony Han Desert, Todek, and support from other Palm Springs residents. We've been advocating to different cities in Indio and Coachella in regards to the current crisis with the current different results for moratorium. As you guys know, Governor Newsom did state that four out of the five largest banks have regarded, agreed to put a 90-day waiver forward regarding mortgage payments. But when asked about a potential moratorium on evictions for renters, Newsom said that the state reserves the right to look at measures if action isn't taken on a local level. Additionally, based on supervisor present statements, there has been no county moratorium for evictions. Therefore, we're applauding the city of Palm Springs for taking actions on the local level. We just want to thank Councilwoman Grace Connor, Chrissy Holte, and Mayor Corrigan for their support and working tirelessly around the clock on to work on these issues. So, we just have a simple ask. We are just, you know, we know that you're putting a moratorium, and you've also asked for a 120-day, you know, agreed payment afterwards. But essentially, we're asking that the city please help demand to the appropriate government agencies, the non-private companies, suspend discontinuance of water, electric, and gas, and all their utility services for nonpayments for up to 90 days, or to extend the time period if declared a COVID-19 epidemic emergency. We also asking Palm Springs to waive city code informant fees, traffic tickets, parking tickets, and other fine fees for declaring an emergency. Additionally, we strongly are recommending for, yes?
I'm sorry, the time has expired, and we'll need to disconnect now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello?
Hi, Edwin. This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting.
Hi, Anthony.
Hi. If you could, please state your full name, and you'll have two minutes to begin your comments.
Sure. Hi, this is Edwin Romo. Good evening, Mayor Corrigan, Mayor Protem, Governor Middleton. I hope you're all, when you're all well and happy during the sustaining COVID.
Edwin, we're having some connection issues. I can try calling you back if you could get to a location that you have better coverage.
Sure.
Okay, I'll call you back at the end.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hi, is this Mary Bon Nunez?
Yes, is this she?
Hi, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting, and you can begin your comments, and you'll have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me now?
If you're watching the meeting live, could you please reduce the volume?
Yes, yes, I can. Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Mayor Bon Nunez with California Partnership, solidarity with our coalition partners, UDW, Comitat Latino, Biony Han, and other groups as well. And so, we support, you know, the efforts of the city in regards to the moratorium. We think that it should expand to a payment plan, or if not, rent forgiveness. Right now, we are seeing it's 120 days, so we need, our community needs more support. What we're asking is, in addition to all of the support from your city, is that we're looking at particularly a six-month, if we can do like a one-year payment plan for residents and commercial tenants. We also recommend that the city partners up with other cities or county agencies for rent forgiveness, potentially doing some form of either creating an annihilation development plan, or community realisation, debt authority, or enhancement infrastructure, finance district. These are all instruments from state law, where the city could partner with the county or other cities to provide some of those rent forgiveness communities, because they're currently displaced. The stimulus package, or we get any checks, are not going to come until 10, 20 weeks, and people that are undocumented or have family statuses are not going to qualify. And so, we definitely, if we can get the rent forgiveness, get a one-year payment plan for tenants and residents, commercial and resident tenants. And so, we're asking to please do the right thing, and we're collecting stories, and we'll be sharing more stories for you all, and we ask to please support our communities. And this is also a public health issue. We're asking people to stay in their homes, and so, they're going to be homeless. And so, we're seeing people getting notices, informal notices, people don't know the difference. And like I said, please don't require a letter. People don't know that there's a moratorium or tenant rights. If you don't have a tenant union here, the only thing we have is criminal legal service. Thank you so much for your time, Council and Mayor.
Okay, thank you, and we'll disconnect now.
Hello?
Hi, is this David Weiner?
It is.
Hi. If you could please reduce the volume, if you're watching the meeting live, and you'll have two minutes to begin your comments when you're ready.
Okay. Sounds good. You ready?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay. Honorable members of the Palm Springs City Council, my name is David Weiner. I have been a 16-year resident of Palm Springs. I want to talk about rent. Many of our friends and neighbors are out of work during this busiest time of the year, when they typically might try to make a little extra more to make it through the dog days of summer. We're talking about a moratorium on evictions, and that's great, but we need much more to protect those in our city who are already living paycheck to paycheck and have no idea when they'll go back to work. A two-month moratorium is not enough. It just catches us up to the governor's executive order. We need to find a way for the people that cannot pay their rent today, or next month, or however long this crisis keeps people away from their jobs, to be able to survive. I can tell you that my apartment manager has already indicated that the day after the moratorium expires, the building owner will begin sending out three-day notices to pay rent or quit. How would that affect our citizens if hundreds or even thousands of tenant households all have eviction proceedings begin against them? Building owners are being given a 90-day forbearance on mortgage payments, and they are not expected to catch up on their mortgage payments once the crisis is over. Why can we not give tenants some relief as well? We need either rent forgiveness or some sort of payment plan, like LA just implemented, where tenants have up to 12 months to catch up on past due rent, or better yet, not have to face that burden at all. I know that part's not on the agenda tonight, but it needs to be on the agenda for the next meeting. I implore you to do the right thing and help the more at-risk members of our community. Thank you very much, and thank you for all your work of the Australian Act.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now.
All right, thank you.
Hello?
Hi, is this Zach Solomon?
Yes, it is.
Hi, this is Anthony calling from Palm Springs City Council meeting, and you'll have two minutes to begin your comments, and you can begin when you're ready.
Okay, great. Hello, City Council, this is Zach Solomon. I'm a Palm Springs resident for most of my life, born and raised. Currently work for the Palm Springs Film Festival, and I've worked many jobs throughout the valley, including working in the service industry, gig economy, recovery, many of the essential jobs within this valley. I also take care of my elderly father, who is deeply compromised by COVID-19. I'm deeply concerned about the repercussions that COVID-19 will have on the workers and families of Palm Springs and the valley as a whole. We are looking at record numbers of unemployment applications, and our local economy uniquely will suffer due to the timing of this, when the best and busiest time for service industry and get more money and get more hours and work secondary temporary jobs is taken away from them, and at best, they have to look at re-entering the job market during summer when employers will be set back and looking at our slow season. This is the time when the many people I know save up so they can get through the slowdown of our economy in the summer. I feel there needs to be a contingency plan to protect the workers that serve and make the tourist event and retirement economy that the city relies on in the first place possible. So, in order, I am first requesting complete rent forgiveness for the people in our community that can prove that their livelihood has been affected by COVID-19, along with debt forgiveness of such things as traffic tickets that the city has control over. Secondly, if this request is not attainable at this time, then a year-round payment plan for those unable to pay rent during the state of emergency, starting from the date of the end of the state of emergency, along with an eviction freeze during that period of time. At the very least, the proposal of item 3A to pass a temporary eviction moratorium, resuming from nonpayment of rent when such payment was caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, is absolutely necessary. Also, it should become an imperative for property management companies and landlords to have all the materials and instructions for tenants to be able to properly and formally notify their inability to pay rent for the month or months during this period of time. The people that live here and that are tenants don't know how to advocate for themselves and find this information, and they need to be able to have access to that. And I know that you won't get the information out, but we also need the tenants, the landlords, to be able to have that information ready for them. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now.
Hello?
Hello, is this Luz?
It is.
Hi, this is Anthony calling from the City Council meeting from Palm Springs. If you could please state your name, and you'll have two minutes to begin your comments.
Okay. Hello, my name is Luz Gallegos, Community Program Director for Todek Legal Center. And Todek, we're an immigrant justice organization here in Coachella Valley. And I'm calling on behalf of our membership that lives in the city of Palm Springs. At this time, we are asking our City Council to put yourselves in the shoes of our community. As it is, we are privileged to have an immigration status, to have jobs, and many to have health coverage. Those that don't have a status don't have any of these opportunities. We have documented hundreds of people that are getting laid off that live in the city of Palm Springs that don't have access to even unemployment insurance. At this time, we are asking the city of Palm Springs to please look into your hearts and to your compassion, and put yourselves in the shoes of those that are not as privileged as we all are, to please approve a rent forgiveness, if not a payment plan that will help us, that'll help our community catch up, as it is, our community lives paycheck to paycheck, and as it is, they don't have a savings plan. And how are they going to come up with thousands of dollars once this moratorium is lifted? We know several of you that sit on the council, and we know your hearts, so we, at this time, we are asking in the name of our community to be the champions and to be the ones that really help our community right now, more than ever, as it is, our community is going through so much trauma, as we all are, but some of our community don't know what their future lies before them, if they have any type of health coverage, because there is so much fear around our community. So, please, I look, I ask for you, on behalf of our organization and our membership from the city of Palm Springs, to please do the right thing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and we'll disconnect now. Hi, Edwin.
Hi, Anthony.
Hi, you can go ahead and begin your two minutes again.
Is that better? You can hear me now?
Yes, you're much better.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Corrigan, Mayor Protem, Holte, and members, Garner, Middleton, and Woods. And I hope you and yours are all well and healthy during this devastating COVID-19 pandemic. I want to thank you for your website, for our Asian communities to be able to report hate crimes based on anti-Asian hate and discrimination. While I may be a new commissioner for our city's Human Rights Commission, I'm speaking tonight in regards to agenda item 3A on the temporary moratorium on evictions, and as a representative of Biony Han Desert, which is collecting anecdotal information on the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic on our most vulnerable communities of color, especially our diverse Filipino residents here in Palm Springs, many who are new immigrants living in working-class multifamily households. I know my cousins have lost their housekeeping jobs, for instance, and many of our families and friends are also renters in Palm Springs, and many have lost jobs or work in industries, including, and not limited to, the hotel, entertainment, retail, arts and creative industries, and education. I encourage rent forgiveness, and if anything, expand the moratorium to one year, if not just the four months, and include the payment of utilities, including the parking tickets, street sweep tickets, business license fees, and other services, code enforcement fees, such as street sweeping and parking tickets. I am my mother's primary caregiver, and having a home has helped us stay safe and healthy. If we are all required to shelter in place, we need to protect our most vulnerable residents as the unhoused communities and those who are also in danger of losing their homes. We stand with the recommendations of California Partnership and our coalition partners. Thank you for your time and support. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Edwin, and we'll disconnect now.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, that concludes public comment.
Great, thank you. We'll now close the public comment, public testimony section of the meeting. The next item is City Council and City Manager comments and reports. City Manager?
Mayor, I don't have any comments at this point. I'll reserve those for COVID update.
Did you have an update on a hotel?
Oh, yes, I'm going to show that picture then, actually, Mayor. But we can show it now. So, this was the picture last evening from our downtown Kimpton Hotel. We thought that was a pretty great gesture, and we wanted to share with everybody, a little, something to make us feel good about the situation that we find ourselves. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any, whoever wants to go next? Councilmember comments, anyone? Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier today, we had the California Cities Revenue and Decisions Policy Committee meeting. A couple of things that I want to highlight from that meeting. There was the discussion of the CARES Act that has been approved by Congress and signed into law by the President. It does provide for relief to cities, to states, as well as potentially relief to cities. But the provisions of that act state that monies given to local government cannot be used to replenish revenue that was lost because of the COVID-19 crisis. They can only be used to subsidize and pay for new services that are being required, new work that we are having to do. There is hope that in future legislation, we will have more direct relief from, through the federal government. But at this point, I think we need to be prepared for some real questions as to how much relief we are going to receive as municipalities through this act, and need to continue to reach out to our congressmen and our senators to implore to implore them of the fate that local municipalities have. Lastly, there is a bill that is in the state legislature. It is Senate Bill 1072, and I'm asking that staff take a look at that bill and report back to council as to whether it is a bill that the City Council should take a position on. This is a bill by Senator McGuire, who is from the North Coast area. The concern is for very small cities that have short-term rentals that do not have the resources within their city to collect the TOT taxes, and creating an opportunity for the state to collect TOT taxes for them. Very sympathetic to those small cities, but also very concerned that nothing in this legislation ever interrupts the ability of cities like Palm Springs to collect our own TOT taxes and process them directly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else?
I have a new comment.
Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to say, you know, we heard a lot of public comment about, I think people are really afraid at this time. They're afraid for public safety in terms of restaurants, you know, wanting to board up businesses. People are afraid about rent. I know it's a scary time for our community, and I just wanted to say that, really, the Palm Springs City Council, we're doing everything we can to protect our residents, our small businesses, everyone in our city. We've spent the last more than two weeks on almost daily calls with the White House, with all mayors of, you know, any city in the country and different associations, you know, trying to get as much information, and also, like Councilmember Middleton said, getting information to pressure other governments to really step in and help our residents. So I just wanted to make a comment, because I hear a lot of fear, but we're really here, you know, to do our jobs and to protect everyone in our city, and we'll continue to do that. Just a few updates, though I haven't left the House in two weeks since our last council meeting. Like I said, we've done a lot of calls. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Find Food Bank, who has started a mobile pantry, Rapid Response, at the Convention Center in the city of Palm Springs. And I think city staff is going to report about that later. But within about two weeks of us reaching out to Find Food Bank to ask how to increase food distribution in the city of Palm Springs, we know that thousands of our residents are not working and struggling to get food and basic resources. And Find Food Bank really stepped up. They have the National Guard working at the Convention Center. It sounds like they've already served about 700 people today at that site. So a lot of people are going to be able to be served. You can get food there. You don't have to be a resident in Palm Springs. So our neighbors can come in and get food there. So I just wanted to thank Find Food Bank and their CEO, Debbie Espinoza, who's really committed to the community and helping our residents access food.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Just along those lines, because there was some confusion from folks yesterday. So the food bank that's happening now that Mayor Protem Holstich just talked about is in addition to the other sites that are in our city. So just to clear that up, there is still the food bank every second and fourth Thursday at the James O. Jesse Desert Highland Unity Center. That's our year-round food bank that we started last year. So if you're confused, don't worry, that one's still happening. This other one is in addition to that because of the great need that we're seeing right now. Just wanted to make sure people are aware that that's still going on.
If I could just add, if you go to Find Food Bank's website, they have a list of all the food distribution sites in the Coachella Valley. So I know that LGBT Center has a food distribution. You know, there's a number of sites, so you can look in Palm Springs. If you can't make it, it's drive-through or walk-through at the Convention Center. I know at James O. Jesse, we're serving hundreds of people every time. So you can check out Find Food Bank on their website and find any food distribution near you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. I have some comments, but I'll do them during the COVID-19 update. So when we move over to consent calendar, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar without Items 1E and 1F are closed for discussion. So we get a staff report on one? And I believe Councilmember Garner is going to vote on that one.
Yeah, I need to recuse.
Before you do, I need a motion and second to accept the consent calendar?
No move.
Second.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Kors?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero, and Councilmember Garner will be recused on Item 1E.
Okay. Do a staff report on 1E.
Mr. Mayor and members of council?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, Item 1E is a request for approval of an expansion of the Parker Hotel project. You had this item at first reading at your last City Council meeting. This is second reading of the item. I don't have any formal presentation, but would be happy to respond to any questions you might have. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Holstich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take this opportunity to respond to residents' concerns. So it sounds like the addition of the recommended Condition 51 has created concerns from residents and neighbors, as well as the Parker Hotel. So if city staff could just respond to those concerns. You know, I heard questions, obviously, issues about traffic and parking and having a process for neighborhood input. I know we talked about this at the public hearing in the last meeting. If you could just respond to that, how this process went forward, how we have recommended conditions at the last council meeting, and then maybe some solutions recommended by staff about how to move forward and resolve some of those issues.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council. This is Marcus Fuller, Assistant City Manager, City Engineer. In regards to the revisions to Engineering Condition 51, this condition was originally recommended during the Planning Commission meeting by the Planning Commission specifically to address the traffic concerns relating around those streets around the Parker Hotel. The way it was worded was a little confusing, and it was my opinion that it should be revised as a normal condition of approval, reflecting an obligation of the developer as a measure, a condition of approval. And I'll go through what those revisions are. So the first one relates to installation of speed feedback signs. We did do a speed survey on Seven Lakes Drive in October and did confirm that on that 25 mile an hour local street, the prevailing speed was 40 miles an hour. And so we've confirmed the need to implement traffic calming measures and have been coordinating with the adjacent neighborhoods on where the location of those speed feedback signs should go. So we've already done the analysis, and so the recommendation is to require the installation of those as approved by the city engineer, and we'll continue to coordinate with the adjacent neighborhoods. I know there was a comment about the installation affecting some hedges, and whether those hedges are on city property, I can confirm they are. The city has 10 feet of right-of-way on the north side of Seven Lakes Drive, so there's a five-foot landscape setback in the city's right-of-way where the speed feedback signs would be installed. And we'll, again, coordinate with that neighborhood to ensure that that speed feedback sign is installed appropriately. The other measures are minor measures, their installation of new stop signs and striping. We have to keep in mind that the Parker Hotel expansion includes the installation of a new driveway at the intersection of Seven Lakes Drive and Linden Way, as well as one at the intersection of Cherokee and Seven Lakes Drive. So installing those additional traffic measures is directly related to the Parker Hotel project, as well as the angled parking, which was recommended along the frontage of the Parker Hotel. That's just another measure to provide some additional on-street parking, because the width of that street will accommodate that angled parking. The other item was installation of signage on the Parker Hotel at the driveways, and then designated on-street parking spaces with Ts and Ls, which we did on Feral Drive, which is a traffic calming measure. And again, this is directly related to the Parker Hotel in the sense that existing traffic that is generated by the parking hotels, as well as additional traffic, all have a contribution to the validated confirmed traffic speeding problems along Seven Lakes Drive. So it's my professional opinion, as your city engineer, that these measures are appropriate to apply to the Parker Hotel project.
Thank you. So you're saying that a lot of these measures, I know some were discussed at the Planning Commission in more detail than they were discussed at the last council meeting, right?
That's correct.
And then some of them were from new input from the council meeting at the public hearing?
Well, these conditions actually were reflected from the Planning Commission, but we did discuss them at the last meeting, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll see if my colleagues have any other questions or concern.
Councilmember Woods?
Hi, thank you, Marcus, for that feedback on the condition. I appreciate that. One of the things that angled parking will also do, I think, that you neglected to say, is that it will actually help reduce speeds as well by narrowing the street, hopefully. That will have some effect on where we're putting angled parking. You know, one of the things that the Parker is doing is they're not providing quite enough parking per code. And I know that they've been doing a lot of parking on the street. I don't know if that's because they haven't been managing their onsite parking well or not, but could we add a condition? Or is there a possibility of adding a condition that would limit the Parker from parking on street?
Councilmember Woods, yes, we could add a condition if that is the wish of the City Council.
And what would that condition look like? Do you have an idea what that might be worded like?
Something to the effect that all parking for Parker Hotel employees and guests shall be onsite per the approved parking-specific plan.
Right, thank you. I would like to add something like that. If it's the wish of my fellow councilmembers.
Question on that, Flynn, is that, are they currently, their parking plan has all the employees and guests parking onsite or not?
If they use an all valet parking program, which means they would be able to stack cars in their parking lots onsite, they would have adequate space for both their guests and their staff. But it does require them to stack vehicles in their parking lots onsite.
Okay, and has this been discussed with them as a possibility? So you know their response to it, so we can get that in?
They have not had the chance to respond to that question or that condition that was just imposed by Councilmember Woods. But in terms of the parking plan, we have looked at the overall number of spaces that can be achieved onsite through stacking in the parking lots.
Thank you.
And this would just require them to basically abide by what they presented to the Planning Commission and the City Council as part of their parking plan. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. That's helpful. Councilmember Middleton?
Marcus, the recommendations that you're making for increased traffic calming, would you be making these recommendations regardless of whether or not the Parker Hall project was going forward?
Yes. The one that's probably added due to the Parker Hotel is the new stop sign at Linden because of the new driveway that's right at that intersection. That's really directly related as well to the Parker Hotel.
And from a time standpoint, if we were to approve all of the recommendations that you're making to us this evening, when would you actually be able to begin implementing these recommendations?
I would provide us probably three months to implement some of these measures.
The reason I ask that question is there is some strong division of opinion within the neighborhood. And the traffic calming that is being recommended is, in many respects, predating Parker Hall. Can we bifurcate these two issues and deal with the traffic calming at a later date when it is possible to bring all of the neighborhoods and neighborhoods together in the Melody Ranch area? Explain what is needed and make certain that everyone has had an opportunity to be heard.
Yes, so if you wanted to separate out those conditions, the speed feedback signs would be deferred. I would recommend that the stop signs go associated with the Parker Hotel project, as well as the angled parking, which is recommended adjacent to the Parker Hotel project. The Ts and Ls that are recommended as traffic calming measures would also be deferred.
I've never said no to a stop sign since I've been in Palm Springs. But if it's the will of my colleagues, I'd like to see us have a little more time for the public to be fully engaged on the traffic calming, notwithstanding the stop sign, the angled parking.
I think that's a great suggestion, if I can jump in. You know, I'm a little concerned, because I know that we had near consensus. I know there were some concerns that were still raised. I've heard other concerns, like lighting plan and, you know, others. But I think now we're getting to a point where we actually do have some division over at least just this. And so to have more time for the neighborhood organizations and the Parker, everyone to come together, to work together like we did before, and really analyze this condition, as well as what Councilmember Woods added, I think would be helpful and beneficial. Otherwise, I think, I know the Parker doesn't want to delay, but thinking through, you know, how we do these items when we can't see the public and have them here. Not here, since I'm in my house, but at our council meeting in the chambers. You know, that's difficult. So we're trying, as a city, to figure out how to keep doing our business that we need to do like this and have public input. And so I do think that Councilmember Middleton's suggestion is a good one.
I could support deferment of those couple of items, because that's typically, when you deal with traffic calming, you do try and get to the point of not complete consensus, but at least you try and get people coming together to, one, identify the problem, see what the best solution for those problems are. It doesn't mean that, and I could see them being deferred, not necessarily angled parking or necessarily requiring the parking to be onsite, but the other ones that were mentioned. And I agree with Marcus, if the stop sign is needed for the entryway, I would say that needs to come up with the project. But otherwise, I could see a deferral.
So do we have a motion? City Clerk, do you know what the motion is?
I've got, my understanding is a motion to accept the staff recommendation adding a condition to limit parking to onsite. a condition to limit parking to onsite and deferring the traffic calming measures with the exception of the stop sign and angled parking.
Okay.
I'd make that motion. I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Woods?
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem Holstich.
Councilmember Garner's recused. Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Coors?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Should we, it's at 7:35, take a short five-ish minute bio break, and then if someone could let Councilmember Garner know to come back in five minutes, since she's already off, that would be ideal.
Good, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we'll be looking at five-minute break. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor.
Back from recess. So, the next item will be item 1F, deferral of making appointments to boards and commissions where terms are set to expire on June 30th, 2020. Staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, at the City Council meeting of March 19th, Mayor Kors requested that the City Council consider deferring action for a six-month period on appointments to boards and commissions where terms were set to expire June 30th due to the local emergency related to the coronavirus.
Great, thank you. I think Councilmember Garner pulled this. Do you want to go first?
So, I pulled this one because I do think that we need to defer appointments generally, but I know that there's quite a few boards that are, or commissions rather, that are already missing a few, lots of people. And so, I'm just curious if maybe we need to kind of look and find out where we might need to put people on so that when this is over, they can start back up with a quorum and make sure too that the people who are supposed to leave by that date want to continue and all of that. So, in general, I agree with it. I just want to make sure that we know specifically where we need to add people and get that confirmation from the people who are going to be extending and if they want to extend.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I think what would make sense here is to reach out to the folks to see if they want to extend or not, and then we should continue to fill vacancies. And if we can do those interviews, you know, by video, that would be ideal. I know Mayor Protim Holstich and Councilmember Garner were doing those, but if you're done too many and you want other people to do it, we can do that. But I agree with that. That should be the process.
Okay, great. Then I, that's even better because I was a little bit confused. So, yeah, we can still fill the vacancies then. Perfect.
Yeah, it's a great idea. Okay, so do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'm on motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Garner.
The second.
Second by Councilmember Woods.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Hi.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Kors?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Great, thank you. Okay, now we're going to move to item 4A, unfinished business, and it's a coronavirus COVID-19 update. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. What we wanted to do was put this on the agenda to update you and our citizens about what's occurring with regard to the virus. As you know, there's a lot of information occurring. There's a lot of information and it seems to be changing daily almost. So, what we want to do is update you on a couple things this evening, but I would note that the information that we're giving tonight, it's also on our city's website, so you certainly will be able to go to there as a resource. First, we'd just like to, I've asked Denise Goolsbee, who is coordinating our census, to give us a quick update on the census count and what they're doing with regard to the COVID. Thank you.
Oh, city council members, in other news...
Anthony.
Are we on? Oh, got it. Honorable Mayor at City Council, in other news, we are putting on a United States Census 2020. Yesterday was census... Speak up loud. Okay, sorry. I'm not talking loud enough. Yesterday was Census Day, and we just want to let you know that we're getting the word out on all of our social media platforms. We've established a complete count committee that's been meeting, not so much now, but virtually. We're reaching out to all the communities of interest and encouraging residents to complete the census. A diversity consultant has been hired to spread the word to the Latino community, helping us get the message out to the Spanish language speakers. And as of this afternoon of April 2nd, the city's census response rate is 34.5%. And right now, some guidance from the federal, state, and local health authorities, the US Bureau, Census Bureau suspending the 2020 census field operations for two additional weeks to April 15th, 2020.
Great. Thank you, Denise. And if we could go back to that first slide, this is, Denise, this is the new city logo?
That is the new city logo. It's been very well received and kind of pops, and we're just really putting that out all over social media and reminding people to do the census. This year's the first time we've done it online, and 34% of the 34.9% of the people have done it through the internet.
Great. Thank you for that update, Denise. You know, council, I would also just like to note that with us this evening is the police chief and fire chief and also our emergency management coordinator, so they can answer any of the questions you have on any of these issues. The next area we wanted to talk about is with regard to some enforcement of some of the restrictions. One of the issues that has been, we've received some complaint, and we'd like to remind everyone of social distancing on the trails. The trails are one of the few areas that have remained open. Obviously, we've had to close a swimming pool, the skate park, and several other facilities. The trails remain open, but we wanted to make sure that people keep your safe distance so we can keep our trails open, because if we keep finding that that's not the case, you know, council, then we may have to think about potentially closing the trails, but right now, we certainly want to keep them open. What you see on the screen is what's going to be pushed out on social media. So, with that, we're going to try and educate, make sure everyone keeps, keeps their distance. So, with that, Chief, I don't know if there's anything you want to add on the enforcement issues that you have seen with regard to some of the other areas that we're dealing with?
Good evening. As it relates to the trails, you know, we have been made aware of the trails where we're having problems. As the city manager mentioned, it's extremely important that people adhere to the rules in regards to the distancing, because again, the trails are just one of the few options left to get outdoors and exercise and enjoy the tremendous trails that we have. However, if we start seeing violations, we will start enforcing. We are made aware, again, of the problem areas, and we will be doing spot checking.
Thank you, Chief.
Can I ask a quick question on trails?
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah, Chief, we have heard from some folks, the people are going across their property to get into the mountains. What is the best way for them to do that because it's creating certain problems in some neighborhoods?
So, they can call our non-emergency line or use our available apps to notify us. Again, we are aware of those problem areas, and we will be spot checking those specific areas more often to address those.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. The next area, just wanted to update you on is with regard to homelessness issues, people that are experiencing homelessness. Jay Verada, our community development director, has an update. Wanted to just reaffirm what some of the resources are there, and Jay, could you give us an update, please?
New services being provided for homeless individuals. The county has launched an emergency hotel voucher program, and I believe on your screen, you can see the number for that. And to date, 30 individuals have been provided with vouchers through that program. In addition, we still have Path of Life Ministries providing services, and they actually have two individuals in hotels and are processing two more. So, they too are providing vouchers for hotels. And of course, we've got the emergency overnight shelter now operating at Palm Springs High School Gymnasium because of the social distancing requirements, and they are open seven days a week, 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And the numbers we have since they've moved there on the 25th of March are approximately 37 people per evening. And I believe the total number served is in the 200s, which includes repeats. Another resource that is still available is Martha's Village and Kitchen. That number two is on the screen in red, so if anyone needs to access services or assist homeless individuals, these are good contacts.
And Jay, could you update us on the Fine Food Bank, which was distributing food at the parking lot next to the convention center this evening? Could you update us on what...
Absolutely.
What that, I think they had a count.
Mayor Protim mentioned they're expected to hit 750 families receiving food contributions this evening for the event that started today, and that's the Rapid Response Pantry. So, Fine Food Bank has set up in the, across the street from the convention center in the parking lot. It's a drive-up service. Individuals will pop open their trunk as they come up, and Fine Food staff and volunteers will put the food in their trunk. The hours of operation for the Rapid Response Pantry is 3:30 PM to 7:30 PM on the first and third Thursday of each month. And as Councilperson Gardner has indicated, Desert Highlands Gateway Estates Mobile Food Pantry is still operational, and that is on the second and fourth Thursday of each month from 5:30 to 6:30. So, we've got weekly food distributions available in Palm Springs.
Thank you. Councilmembers, I didn't know if you had any questions for Jay?
I have a question if I can, Mr. Mayor. Jay, so you said that the high school emergency shelter that the county is operating for people who are homeless, is that at capacity? I think you said it was 37 people or so, but I believe it could fit more. So, I was just wondering if it's at capacity or if there's more space there.
There is more space there. Thank you for pointing that out. They can accommodate 50 individuals there, and the reports are the individuals are very appreciative of the social distancing that's available there. So, they're getting about 37 per night. I'm sure that will increase as word gets out about the availability, but they can accommodate up to 50.
So, is it just that people aren't needing those, I mean, obviously, people need those services more than 37 people a night in our city. So, is there, if people don't know about it yet, or are they limiting it to people who are high-risk?
I don't know exactly, but I would wonder if the additional emphasis on the hotel vouchers has helped individuals get into hotel rooms as opposed to staying at the overnight shelter.
So, is it possible maybe to get some of that data from the operator? Maybe they might have some of that information?
Yep.
Thank you.
That'd be helpful. Thank you. Thank you to the county and Supervisor Perez and Greg Rafferty, guys on his staff for putting together a voucher program really quickly for homeless individuals in Palm Springs. I know the boxing club wasn't the safest environment due to the virus, and so really grateful for them stepping up to run the shelter and get people into housing or into motels or hotels with vouchers.
Dr. Reddy, are the chiefs still available?
Yes, they are.
Okay. We had a question from a couple of business owners that were very concerned about break-ins to their properties and felt that boarding up, putting plywood in front of their windows would make them safer. And my understanding is that you're both chiefs are convinced that in fact, instead of making it safer, boarding up the windows makes it less safe. Could you elaborate?
Yes, absolutely. I'll cover from a PD's perspective. You know, obviously, our calls have actually gone down for service, freeing up a lot of our officers to do close patrols at our businesses. And they do a lot of frequent drive-by, and they're able to see in the businesses to see what's actually going on as they drive by. Having it boarded up gives us no idea what's going on internally, gives us no idea if anybody's squatting internally, and should there become a fire, it makes it extremely difficult for us to have access and even more so for the fire department. And I'll turn it over to the fire department to cover that part.
This is Chief Nolder. So, the concern that I have is the way that the properties that have been boarded up recently did not go through a proper process through the city. And so, as Chief Perez said, the means of ingress and egress are basically obsolete. So, they have boarded up all windows, all doors, so you don't know where the entry points are, and we don't know where to access the building. So, that creates a huge delay if anything were to happen in the building. And once they're in, egress, usually there are at least two points of egress from a building, and those are boarded. So, if you need to go out a different way than you came in, that makes it very difficult. And I want to give you some statistics on just vacant buildings that are boarded from the National Fire Protection Association, and they get their data from fire departments across the country, and we're one of those fire departments that provide that information through what we call national fire incident reporting. So, in 2018, NFPA was the last report they did on this with that data from the NFRS. And over the most previous five years to that report, 30,200 structure fires per year occurred in vacant properties. In the 60 civilian deaths, 160 civilian injuries, and $710 million in property damage per year. And that's national. And these buildings were not abandoned buildings. These were due to other reasons. Of that, 3,300 firefighters per year were injured in these vacant buildings. Of these, 43% of the vacant building structures were in properties that were secured, and the other 57% were unsecured. Also, 50% of the vacant building fires were intentionally set compared to only 10% of all structure fires. So, that's a big difference between the two. And then, fire spread beyond the structure in a vacant building that is secured is 9%, and in an unsecured is 12% compared to 4% for overall structure fires nationally. So, that gives you an idea. There are many reasons why this occurs, and I won't go into all those reasons, and this is a pretty big report that the NFPA did, and you can find it on their website. But it just shows you that when vacant buildings are secured that way, that it creates a much danger, much more dangerous situation for occupants and for those responding to those buildings.
Thank you, Chief Nolder and Chief Perez.
I have a question if I can for the chief. Thank you. So, is there, I know that we're hearing concerns from property owners or businesses about protecting their, you know, livelihoods and their stores and the items in their restaurants and such. Is there any indication that we don't have the resources right now to police downtown or business districts, or that, you know, any indication that there's looting or anything happening? I just sort of want to explain what resources we're currently providing to make sure that residents and businesses are safe during this time, you know, and what the projections are for that.
Once again, our calls for service are way down. Crime is down overall, and all the freed-up time our officers are stepping up their extra patrols in the various areas of our city. They're fully aware of the businesses that are shut down, whether they be downtown or throughout the city, and they're close patrolling those locations. But for the business owners, most business owners have some level of a security system, camera system. Now that their businesses are closed, it's probably a good time to review their system, make sure it's operational, and the cameras are facing, the lenses are clean, and they're facing the appropriate angles, and they evaluate whether they should add additional cameras to cover more area of their business to make it more easier to call us when they see something suspicious on their camera systems. Most systems are available now, give you the ability to access remotely via your phone to view your cameras. So, something to consider for businesses now while they're closed, if they don't have it already.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The next area we'd like to briefly discuss is with regard to our different utilities, and they have some rules that they put in place that I think that might be helpful. Marcus Fuller, Assistant City Manager, is going to briefly go through what those are. Marcus?
Thank you, Mayor and council. We'd like to remind our businesses and residents that there's a number of programs available to assist those with impacts to, related to COVID, on reducing costs related to utilities. On the next slide, we show Desert Water Agency is offering a program called Help to Others Assistance Program. They are suspending all water shut-offs and late fees waived through May 16th, and they're also encouraging alternative methods of payments by phone or credit card with any of those fees associated with those payments absorbed by DWA, the additional processing fees. There's also emergency assistance through Help to Others in partnership with the United Way of the Desert, and they're providing 100 in bill credits that's available. And we'd refer you to the unitedwayofthedesert.org/helptoothers or also refer to Desert Water Agency's website, dwa.org/h2o. Southern California Edison is also offering similar programs by suspending disconnections and waiving late fees by requests for customers affected by COVID-19. They also have a similar assistance fund, offering $100 in bill credits, and we'd recommend that you call Edison at 800-205-8596. And also, Edison is offering to provide payment plans for any residents or businesses affected, and you can contact Southern California Edison at 800-655-4555. They also offer two programs, the CARE program and the FARA program, that can offer reductions in electricity bills for eligible customers and qualified households. And on the next slide, they have a couple of other programs that some aren't aware of and should utilize if they qualify, and that's the Medical Baseline Program and the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program. All of these programs are available on the Edison website, and we're also adding these to our city website for reference. Southern California Gas is also temporarily suspending disconnections for customers affected by COVID. We recommend those customers contact Southern California Gas directly at 1-800-427-2200. They also offer a similar program to Southern California Edison through the CARE program that can offer reduced gas bills of 20% for eligible customers. And again, we refer residents to the Southern California Gas website or to call their 800 number. Also, Ready to Lift So We Can Rise is a program from Lift to Rise in partnership with the United Way of the Desert. They connect eligible families and residents to every currently available form of public assistance. They offer and coordinate what's called the Coachella Valley Economic Protection Plan and Support Fund, which also offers emergency cash, up to $200 of relief for households economically impacted by COVID-19. And they also coordinate a discount program for utilities, offering reduced utilities of 20% to 30% for gas and electricity. We would refer you to the Lift to Rise website or call 760-348-8135. Again, all of this information will be available on our city website. And finally, our solid waste provider, Palm Springs Disposal Services, is offering a 20% discount to all eligible businesses affected by COVID-19 that have been closed. And they're also recommending all commercial customers to revise their solid waste subscription to reduce it to the minimum to further reduce their costs during the shutdown. And for residents affected by the COVID-19 virus, any residents who've lost unemployment, Palm Springs Disposal is offering to waive residential solid waste fees for the April to June quarterly billing. We would recommend that those residents contact Palm Springs Disposal directly at 760-327-1351. Again, this information will be posted on our website, and we'll have this information available to the public.
Thank you, Marcus. And if I could, then, just Daniel DeSelmz, our emergency management coordinator, could you step up quickly just for a minute? Just wanted to update you, let you know what he is doing with regard to the daily update?
Am I on now? So, I have daily updates with the county, and I'm updating a projected chart that's just, I have slides and I'll email them out tonight. It's just keeping case data on what's happening in Riverside County and then also specifically Palm Springs. When you look at the curve, they're basically identical. Case data for Palm Springs right now, we have 35 positive cases. Three of those are deaths. So, our death rate is actually just under 10%, which is a factor of both our demographic. So, and the other thing that I have for you tonight is PPE for the city. We have a good source of PPE right now, but we are going to start...
PPE is?
Protective equipment, which is masks, gloves, and gowns specifically for fire and PD. Go through masks, gloves, and gowns every time they interact with a patient or a suspect. So, the city's going to go through about 1,500 masks per week. Right now, we have 8,000 N95 masks. So, projecting that out, 1,500 masks per week, we're going to go through that pretty quickly. Average cost of an N95 is about $5 to $7 a mask. So, every week, we're going to go through about $10,000 worth of masks.
Thank you, Danny. Just a couple of other things, council. I would just note that there's a significant amount of information with regard to resources for businesses, small business, large business, and that information is sort of voluminous, and it's been changing. At our website, I would recommend that people look at our website for a full listing of what those are, and as they keep, in essence, each day, we're adding to it with when we get more information and detail. And then, I'd just like to close on a couple positive notes. It turns out from the federal legislation that our airport will be entitled to approximately $10 million in revenue that they will be able to receive to help offset the losses. So, that's good news. And finally, with regard to the Andaz project, the stalled hotel, apparently, what we understand is that the new owner has closed on their loan. We have extended their billing permit through the end of the crisis, and then at that point, they'll formally proceed to renew their billing permit. So, I just wanted to provide that information. It seems to be a bit of good news. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. And I was kicked out for a little bit, so if I say something that was said, someone just interrupt me or tell me. But I do want to make a couple comments, and then we'll have some discussion on a whole bunch of stuff. And the good part, I really do want to commend staff who've, with limited staff, a lot of staff are out, a lot of staff are working from home, very few people are in city hall. Really, on the communications front and so many other areas, have done an amazing job. Our website, I've had people in other cities say they go to our website for information. It is regularly updated with all the programs and the state and county rules. There's a ton of information there. So, I just want to commend our communications folks and the team for the great work they're doing on that. I was kicked off when Jay was talking about the homeless shelter at the high school, and I don't know if you talked much about the vouchers, but so far, 95 families have been housed in hotels or motels through the voucher program in the county, 38 families in the Coachella Valley. There are four motels participating. Two of the four are here in Palm Springs, one's in Palm Desert, and one's in India. And that program is continuing, so that's also good news. I wanted to make sure people had. There's a lot of information on business. I worked at an online town hall with a chamber, our staff, and the Coachella Valley Small Business Development Center, going through all the programs. That's available on our website, the PowerPoint. It's really helpful information. We're also at Visit Palm Springs, listing all the businesses, restaurants that are open for delivery and takeout, businesses that are doing gift cards, businesses for online shopping, and how you could submit your business if you're interested in being listed, so people can support local businesses here. So, I want to add that. I did want to also share that Riverside County Department of Public Health is now recommending that people wear some kind of face covering on their outside of their home, including in any essential business or essential work. That includes on trails. I want people to have, it can be a bandana, a scarf. You should be using a medical mask. We need those for healthcare providers, but really important that people do that. They're finding through the evidence that this is transmitted. They know through drop lists. I think some of it is staying airborne for some time, and they want everyone to be wearing a covering. It's not a requirement, but it's a strong recommendation when they're out of their homes. So, just another important thing to share, and really want to commend our, the frontline folks on this, the healthcare... And really want to commend our, the frontline folks on this, the healthcare workers, the grocery workers. Our public safety are doing an amazing job. The medical and healthcare personnel are all putting their lives on the line to get us through this, and we're all so grateful as a city and as a council for everything everyone's doing. I know Danny added some of the data, but some sobering, you know, news is, you know, the county went up 63 cases over the last day to 493, 148, and all nine of the deaths were, nine of the deaths were in the Coachella Valley. And as Danny said, 35 of the cases and three of the deaths are in Palm Springs. Very sadly, among those deaths was the deputy sheriff today, and our hearts and prayers go out to him and his family, as well as the families of everyone who has died from this awful virus. 25 employees at the Riverside County Sheriff's Department have tested positive, and it's a real reminder that the people who are on the front lines, every time they have to interact with someone, whether it's in public safety or a grocery worker or a healthcare worker, they're putting themselves at risk. And when they're putting themselves at risk, they're then putting their families at risk when they go home. And so really want to just push out to folks, unless you need to go out, you shouldn't be going out. You don't need to go to four different stores to get different goods that you'd like. Really try and limit how much you go out because you're putting yourself and your families at risk, but all the people who are the true heroes here, who are out on the front lines at risk. And overall, I want to say, the people in Palm Springs and the businesses have been incredible. We've seen overwhelming compliance. The police chief has told us there's been overwhelming compliance, and we just need to keep at this. We're two, little over two weeks into what everyone's thinking is probably minimal of six weeks, and it's going to get hard. But everyone doing what they're doing, we're seeing in California the curve starting to flatten. We're not seeing the increase that we've seen in New York or other places. And so doing this early was so important, and it's going to make a huge difference and save lives. So I just really want to thank all of our residents and businesses, as well as the frontline people who are doing such an incredible job. And with that, I think there are lots probably of comments and questions, so open it up to other people to go first, and then I'll fill in anything I have left.
I have some--
Councilmember Garner, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to also let people know that on the city's website, as Mr. Reddy stated, Dr. Reddy stated, there's a coronavirus page, and there's information there in English and in Spanish. And there's also information there of if you are experiencing any kind of hate crimes. We have seen that there's been hate crimes and discrimination against Asian American community since all of this started. So that information is on the website, and you can report that and get resources if you or anyone else is experiencing something like that. And I really hope that you're not, but it's there. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone next? Councilmember Middleton.
I want to thank the mayor for his comments and Councilmember Garner for hers. And most particularly, I want to thank the members of our community that have really stepped forward and voluntarily complied with the very, very difficult restrictions that have been placed. They're there for a reason. We're trying to save lives. But we depend on people voluntarily stepping forward and doing the right thing. And everywhere that we look in Palm Springs, we are seeing that happen. And lastly, a very large thanks to the men and women who are employees of the city of Palm Springs for the work that they have done and for the risks that they are taking on behalf of everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any? Mayor Pratim Holstage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to staff for all of the work and really comprehensive update. I know all of that information is extremely helpful for our residents and our workers and our businesses. I just wanted to raise the hotline, if staff could. I don't think you talked about it. I'm a very visual learner, so I can't see your presentation. I have it in PowerPoint. But could you talk about the city's hotline and email address that you all set up to address residents' questions? I know we're getting a lot of questions about enforcement from residents. We're getting a lot of questions about what, you know, applies in Palm Springs versus the state order. So could you give some direction about where people should direct those questions?
Well, first of all, on the hotline, Denise is going to answer that question, but what we had hoped to do is we set up the hotline, and our goal is to respond to every call within one hour. Now, we may not have the specific answer within one hour, but Denise is doing her best to get back to someone and let them know where we've sent that call and who on staff, and then we will follow up with their answer. So Denise, can you give a little more specific with the number and some other information?
Sure. When we activated this last week, it went like gangbusters, and it's still going. I've taken about 100 calls, and with the help of wonderful department heads and staff, I've been able to answer as many questions as possible, but I've also routed them to the appropriate staff members to answer the questions I couldn't. The number is actually my cell number, personal cell number. It is 760-902-1155.
Thank you for that, Denise. Thank you.
Absolutely, just like you. You put yours out, I'll put mine out, right? So people have been calling on all sorts of different issues with questions. I've gotten a lot of the questions over to David and to our city attorney or Marcus. Everybody's going through it as quickly as they can and giving appropriate and accurate answers as possible, timely. And also, we also have a web, an email address. This one goes to Amy. And again, all this information can be found on our coronavirus page on the website.
And also, I would note the mailer, the citywide mailer that you had asked us to get out with this information, because some people may not have access to it. That has been delivered to the post office, and our hope is that within the next couple of days, it will be delivered to every home, household in the city.
Thank you. And so when, if residents have questions about enforcement, say they find violations, what's the best way that they should report those? Is that to the hotline, or is that somewhere else?
They certainly can submit it through the hotline. There's also opportunities to do it via the web, through our complaint system or through our app, the Palm Springs app. They can do it any one of those ways.
Thank you. And people can still continue to email us and me, and we'll respond to you with your questions. We may forward you to the hotline because you're going to get a response in an hour from Denise. So thank you for putting that together for our residents. I just wanted to discuss, if I can, I know I didn't give a heads up to our chiefs or to our city staff, but I know it's concerning to see the loss of life in the sheriff's department. And I know we talked at the last meeting about our protections with our police department and fire department, but I just want to know if there's anything else that we should be doing or that the city council should be considering at this time to protect our first responders.
Mayor Pratim Holstage, that is an issue that we talk about daily. We're very concerned about our safety, first of our, particularly of our frontline employees, and also we have other employees in the field. But I'm going to ask both chiefs to come down, and they will explain the protocols, the important protocols that they've instituted in their department to do everything we can to make sure our team is safe.
As far as the PD, obviously, the announcement of the death of the Riverside County Sheriff's Deputy today was alarming. My understanding is they got several other employees that are also hospitalized. So today, we took our precautions to another level, thanks to the fire department and our emergency coordinator making sure that we have the appropriate cleaning supplies and masks. We're also taking the temperature of our employees before they even enter our facility, anybody, not only our employees, but the staff that cleans our facility, and it's logged outside of our doors before they even enter our building. And just extra cleaning precautions that we're doing and things of that nature right now. So right now, we're doing just fine, and we're getting all the support we need from our peers and fellow department heads and our city managers.
Great.
Mr. Chief Naldor, thank you for your concern. So we've had assistance from Riverside County Health, and we have all the masks, gowns, everything we need to protect our firefighters for, as the emergency coordinator said, for at least the next month. We have put in a COVID response plan in place. We started it three weeks ago. We speak to our labor group on a daily basis to find out their concerns, things that they're addressing in the street on a daily basis so that we can update our plan. We just updated it today, actually. We have a new protocol for responding to assisted living facilities and nursing facilities, where we're asking them to bring the patients outside so both we don't contaminate their facility and so that our firefighters don't all have to go inside of that facility. So on a daily basis, we're making sure that our firefighters are protected because we want to protect their families, we want to protect our fellow city employees also. So at this time, we're in really good shape. I'm happy to report that we've had five firefighters quarantined through this process, and all five have gone through their 14-day process and have been tested negative at this time and are back to work. So we have a full force of employees responding and staffing your fire stations on a daily basis.
And Chief, could you remind them, I think it was a great idea, you don't rotate between stations any longer. Explain that, please.
Yeah, that's correct. And I gave that update at the last council meeting, but we actually, in our plan, and I'm happy to share that plan, we've shared our plan with other county chiefs and allowed them to plagiarize our plan because we were way ahead of the game, like many things the city of Palm Springs has done. But as part of that, we normally would allow firefighters to staff between the fire stations when the vacancies occurred, and now they were only allowed to staff their own station. We've put a matrix in place to allow that, that we didn't have in place prior to this. And also, like Chief Reyes and his department's doing, every day, we have a single entry point to the fire station, and they have to go through that point, take their temperature, and do a checklist that we both have electronically and a sign-in sheet for them. And if they have any of the symptoms, they don't come in the fire station, and they're sent home, so.
And Chief, the reason you don't rotate is because--
Yeah, we don't want to contaminate. Matter of fact, it's both on duty and off duty. We actually have asked them not to socialize with each other off duty, just in case one of them does, is exposed, so that they don't expose. We don't have to close a fire station down. Like, in other words, if they work at Fire Station 1, and then they go to Fire Station 2, now we have two stations that we have to worry about potentially quarantining those individuals. Now that we have it at a single station, we only need to worry about quarantining that station and those firefighters, and we don't put down our whole city's fire department.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks for your work. That's probably the number one issue of importance for our city council right now, is protecting our police and fire and our frontline workers. So I know we don't have a meeting until two weeks from now, but if we need an emergency meeting to consider any public safety issues, you know, I think we should do that. I just have one last item. So we got a public comment from Christine Soto, who is the owner of that Ora Live in Palm Springs. And it's a request, it looks like they're starting a fundraiser and requesting city involvement to fundraise for workers who are affected. And I've been watching as a number of cities have started crisis relief funds and other sort of funds to help workers or small businesses who are affected by this. So the request is to review or look at using the city foundation. I know that we've fundraised for homelessness and other related causes with our city foundation. I know right now, a lot of people are looking and kind of starting fundraisers and not knowing sort of where to donate. I've gotten requests about where people might be able to donate their stimulus check or other, you know, funds to help our workers. And I would really like to see us support that and create, using our foundation and our city manpower, womanpower, to kind of help lead that effort and fundraise so that at least. I know we don't know what our city resources will be. We brought an item about economic relief for workers and businesses. We're still looking at our full budget, so I'm anxious about when that will come forward so we can consider other economic relief programs. We got some good input from people about money we've already budgeted, like the tenant improvement or the facade improvement program, things like that. So I'm anxious for that to go forward, but I'm wondering if in the meantime, we can commit to or consider for the next agenda, an item to use the city foundation to fundraise for a crisis response fund.
Just a quick follow-up on that, and I had a conversation with the city manager on that as well. And, you know, I think what would make sense, in thinking about it, is figure out if there's a nonprofit, even if we raise the money that is equipped to decide who should get funds, limited to Palm Springs, right? Since we don't have the staff who could decide who should get funds. But I think people might feel better giving it to the city's foundation, knowing that the money will go to our residents and businesses and workers here.
I agree. That would be great.
Great. Okay, Councilmember Woods?
I just, I don't want to reiterate what all of my esteemed council members, fellow council members had already said, so I agree with all of it. Thank you. But just a couple of points is, you know, the city of Palm Springs, including the staff and the council members, have been doing a great deal of work, have been a leader, not only in gathering and synthesizing information that's coming out of the White House, that's coming out of Sacramento, and it's coming out of other jurisdictions, but we've actually been taking that information, putting it on our website for our residents, to protect our residents, to keep our residents informed in a new, different way than what the national news might do. And we're setting policy for our city that really is helping our residents stay healthy, and hopefully we'll have more policy that will be able to pull on that state and federal kind of stuff to keep our businesses viable after they reopen. The other thing I wanted to say is I've gotten several emails and phone calls regarding short-term rentals. Short-term rentals at this point are halted. If you think that you have a short-term rental problem or someone's renting short-term, our vacation rental hotline is still open, and you're more than, it's another phone number, I know, but you still can call that number as well. I also understand that there's been some congestion at our trailheads, and I would ask people to be very concerned about that and be respectful. You may not be concerned about your own, but somebody who's watching you that's on that trail trying to get some exercise maybe, so do try and keep your social distancing as you do that. But I really want to thank the staff and my fellow council members, as well as the citizens of Palm Springs for all they're doing. I understand there's a group of people that are sewing gowns and face masks out there for people to use, and I think that is incredible, and it's a testament to the Palm Springs and the people that live here. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. So I have some questions and then some suggestions. So, and maybe this is for the city attorney, just the things I'm getting a bunch of questions on that people are unclear on, that maybe we can clear up for them. One is on short-term vacation rentals. We have our policy based on, with the state guidance, the county today said people can't accept reservations through June 19th at a short-term vacation rental now. Can you clarify what that rule is, if you know yet, Mr. Malick?
Yes, that appears to be the intent of the ordinance, or the order. The order says that vacation rental owners are not to take any action with regard to booking rentals, and the order is effective until that June date. And so putting those together, that would be my interpretation at this point. It just came out this afternoon. We've been in constant contact with the county council's office, so I expect to be talking to the county council first thing in the morning to clarify that that was the county's intent and maybe seek clarification from the county.
Okay. And if that is the case, we should make sure we get that email out to all our vacation rentals and home shares, that they can't, right now, we said they couldn't take bookings till the end of April, but the county would supersede ours, as I understand it. So we should just get that information out. I'm getting a lot of questions from folks about both pet and people grooming. Can they have someone come to their house and cut their hair and have their nails done? Can they, why not a brick and mortar store? Can you bring your dog to a dog groomer? So do we have-- Can you bring your dog to a dog groomer? So do we have updates from the county on that? And what are our rules on that as of now?
So one of the recent updates from the county interpreting the state's order stated that mobile pet grooming is allowed under the state's order. It doesn't reference any other animals, and it doesn't reference any brick-and-mortar facilities. And so we're seeking clarification from the county right now, and hopefully, we'll be receiving that within the next day or so. The county has stated that brick-and-mortar hair salons are also prohibited under the state's order. It doesn't indicate whether mobile services are covered under the state's order. I think that until we receive clarification from the county, it would be safer to assume that mobile personal grooming services are not allowed.
Yeah. I mean, it makes sense, since any services they're allowing, you have to have six-foot social distancing between people, which would be very hard for a haircut or nails, but possible with a pet. So if we can get clarification and get that on the website, because I've gotten a bunch of those questions, and we got some public comment on those today. Also getting questions about what real estate services are allowed and in what way. My understanding is open houses aren't, but virtual tours. Any update on that?
The county's recent clarification on that issue is that real estate services are an essential service. And as part of the county's clarification, they indicated that as much of the services as possible should be done electronically, online, and limit, obviously, in-person contacts. And if in-person contacts are required, that social distancing be implemented.
Okay. And just confirming, because it wasn't in our original rules, but is in the county's, that community pools, gyms, barbecue areas are all nonessential and not allowed to be used in HOAs or other venues?
Correct. That was in a recent county fact.
Okay, great. And then, you know, I know that the seven Bay Area counties, which is, you know, probably a quarter of the state's population, came down with some new rules today. We were ahead of them on most of them, as far as parks and things like that. But one that really stood out in reading the articles and the comments from construction workers is they're shutting down a lot of construction that, you know, construction workers, many people in those jobs, are not making a lot of money, who, and there were interviews with construction workers who feel pressured to work in those jobs. Just walking around my neighborhood, there are a lot of remodels going on, and a lot of workers who don't have six-foot social distancing, who are putting themselves and then their families at risk, and of course, all of our frontline personnel in law enforcement and co-compliance people and building inspectors at risk. So can you just go over exactly what they did in those, in the San Francisco Bay Area, so we can really talk as a group about what we may want to do beyond what Riverside County may be doing?
Yes. The county orders up in the Bay Area distinguish between essential construction and nonessential construction. And it's my understanding that the city will be implementing a similar distinction, so that things like home, you know, deck remodels, kitchen remodels, those types of construction activities will be deemed nonessential. Continuing construction of new residential homes will be deemed essential, and the city will not be issuing building permits for nonessential construction because of the risk related to conducting the inspections by the city inspectors, as well as the risk associated with the workers who are doing the construction.
Okay. And is there a way we can get out to anyone who has a building permit, any of the developers, anyone, contractors, about the requirement of six-foot social distancing? And make sure the workers know about it, because I'm not sure that word is, that's happening or that is getting out, even just a bunch of workers sitting around, you know, on the sidewalk, having lunch right next to each other. And we just can't put them in that situation right now.
Yes. As part of that clarifying order, I think that we'll be doing an aggressive public communication campaign that would go to the contractors, the permit holders, and really call on them to let their contractors and subcontractors and employees know about the social distancing.
Okay. Thank you. And then, one other thing, just, I know at the next meeting, we're gonna, we're gonna have more information on the budget and get a sense where we are. But when we bring those back, I'd like to bring back, looking at, you know, whether it's a permit or a business license or an entitlement, that we extend those for the time of the emergency order with no cost to any of those folks. Because if a business isn't able to operate, they shouldn't be paying a business license during that time. So I'd like to bring that, and also look at parking and other fines and waivers for those during this time as well, just when we bring that back for the city manager. Yeah, Councilmember Woods? You're still on mute?
Thank you.
There you go.
Another thing to consider, when the city manager comes back with options about our financial situation and maybe how we need to mitigate and mediate, remediate some of the impacts of it all, is it is my understanding, and I have not confirmed it yet, that the county this afternoon said that short-term rentals, including hotels, were 60 days or less. And that that is extended till June 19th. If that is the case, two things need to happen. One is, it basically will shut down one of our largest TOT for even a longer period of time than anticipated. And two, if that is the case, we need to get that word out to our short-term rental and our hoteliers that this is coming down, at least to research it and know it's coming down the pike. Thank you.
Great. Mayor Proton Holston?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your comments. I just wanted to add, because I agree with everything you said. And I believe the city attorney advised us that the workers have remedies if they might be forced to work in a workplace that's unsafe or violate state orders. So I believe Cal OSHA might be one option for people to contact, as well as an employment law attorney. Could you speak to that, or could we, when we notice employers and work sites, or when we're kind of putting on that information or restrictions, that we're including workers' rights information about how to complain if your workplace is unsafe?
I'd like to follow up on the issue that Councilmember Woods just raised. Previously, it's been my understanding that rules regarding vacation rentals, short-term rentals that are imposed by the county, apply only in non-incorporated communities. So as we're getting clarification, I would certainly like to know whether or not the county has taken over a responsibility that had previously been delegated to all of the cities.
That's...
Yeah, so what they...
That's an important point. So the county's order does apply within incorporated cities such as Palm Springs. Now, the city has also issued its own order, and the city is authorized to impose more strict requirements. We cannot lessen the requirements of the county, but we can impose more stringent requirements. So it's important to know that, to the extent the city's order is not inconsistent with the county's, the county's applies within the city.
And one thing on that, and it probably led to some of the questions I got on HOAs and community pools. Since our order didn't have that originally, and the county's does, when we, if we're gonna keep our order, and we're gonna try and be as consistent as we can, of course, with the state and the county, unless we want to go further, we really make sure on the website, we're referring people to look at those rules as well, that ours are just some of the rules, but not all of them. So people know that those are incorporated into our rules as well.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else on this? Anything else you need, city manager?
I think we have direction, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. So let us move to our next item, which is a public hearing. It's consideration of the Community Development Block Grant, five-year consolidated plan, annual action plan, and citizen participation plan, and CDBG 2020-21 budget. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We have a brief staff report for you. I have a little PowerPoint I'm gonna show. And then Jay Verada, our Community Development Director, is available for questions here. And then also, on the line, on our phone, we will have our consultant, Mr. Stamps. Yeah, so go ahead and bring him up, if you would. Mr. Clerk?
Hi, Mr. Stamps. This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council. If you could reduce the volume of whatever you're watching right now, and the city manager's about to begin the presentation, and you'll be on the line on standby.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, members of council. This public hearing, this is to begin the process of the new fiscal year for our Community Development Block Grant. And just a couple things to... This doesn't seem to be... Here we go. The purpose of this public hearing is basically threefold. One is to review the consolidated plan goals for the new program year. Two is to discuss the draft fiscal budget, that we would hope that you would give us some maybe further direction. The budget as we have it here is based on information that we had at our previous meeting, that you had given us some direction on. And then finally, we'd just like to note that with all the quick-moving legislation that's happening both at the state and the federal level, the federal government is part of their legislation that they passed last week with regard to the COVID, the CARES Act, is going to provide some additional dollars for block grant. And that's something we want to discuss a little bit this evening as well. A couple of key findings of the plan, obviously, you will see there that 18% of the households in Palm Springs have a housing cost burden of paying more than 30% of their income. And you see the breakdown between renters and homeowners there. And then approximately, there are 9,965 families in the city that live below the poverty rate in 2017, which is the latest numbers that we have from our survey. And this is an increase from 2015. With regard to what the budget for the new program year 2021, it's divided into three categories. Public facilities, capital improvements is the largest amount, 305,000 that you see there. The general direction that we believe that the council may want to go in based on some previous discussions, is the public restroom improvements at Sunrise Park and Demuth Park. We originally had on there the, potentially, the improvement of the homeless shelter facility, however, at the former boxing club on El Cielo. However, that has now moved to the high school. The long term of that, whether it comes back to that facility is unknown. So what we'd be recommending is that we go to the second capital project, which is these restroom improvements. The second category is public services, that 43,000. I would note that we have a requirement on fair housing. What we've done for many years is we contract with the Fair Housing Council of Riverside County, and they perform that service for us. And then $10,000, which is for our home repair program, and that's been a longstanding program that we've had. I would just finally note that we're allowed 20% administration, and those costs go towards our staff funding, which actually help us operate the program, for a total of $449,000. Now, what's new, and new within the last week, is the coronavirus aid relief called the CARES Act, federal legislation. We're expecting approximately an additional 100,000 to 200,000 in block grant funding. The purpose of this money is for additional small business lending, unemployment insurance, tax relief, and you can see relief to individuals and employers, and also potentially healthcare measures. We're still going through all the specifics. That will be more forthcoming. But what we do know is that the current plan probably will need to be amended to include these. But right now, we've sort of put a placeholder there, so we're moving forward. And as the process unfolds, we'll have more for you to decide in terms of when we find out specifically what that amount of money is. Now, Citizen Participation Plan. As you recall, at a previous meeting, we had changed directions on the model that we're using for distribution. So our new Citizen Participation Plan is that instead of doing an RFQ-type of process, we will identify a pool of qualified organizations that will help us achieve the goals that you'll be approving ultimately in the consolidated plan. Now, from this pool, we will negotiate and carry out for those activities we've been done on the outside with other qualified organizations to see if they're able to do the work for us. Or finally, for the city projects that we're doing ourselves in-house, we would follow the city's bid and contracting procedures. So what's the timeline? So tonight, obviously, is the first public hearing that's required before publishing the plan. Within a couple days, we will have the plan. The consolidated plan is called the Action Plan. The participation plan available for the 30-day review. At the end of that review period, we will schedule another public hearing, which you see there is May 7. Now, I would note, what's important is that the middle to HUD now is, the deadline is August 16. We recommend that we get it in before then, but because of the COVID situation, they have extended that from mid-May to mid-August. So finally, the last slide here, again, I would just note that the due date is extended to August. Some other restrictions they have changed, suspends the 15% cap on public services, which means potentially we could do more than we had in the past. Suspends the public hearing, in-person hearing allows for more virtual. And then, of course, you see, reduces the process from 30 to five days. Now, we're not recommending that because we do have the time to proceed with the 30 days. And then, of course, finally, the last point there is that HUD could waive further program requirements, and we will keep you posted on how that progresses. So with that, council, that is the specific presentation. I think the city clerk will open the public hearing, and then we'll be available for discussion. And of course, our consultant is on the line with us as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So first, are there any questions for staff? Not comments, just questions? Okay. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak for up to two minutes. Are there any speakers?
Mr. Mayor, we have no public comment for this item.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion or additional questions from staff, for staff from the council? Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Reddy, I'm looking into goal number two in the staff report. And nondiscrimination statement, but not one that's consistent with the city's standard nondiscrimination. Can you explain why we have that difference?
I'm sorry, that is number two in the staff report, Councilmember Middleton?
Yeah. So it's the housing one?
Okay.
Yeah, housing goal number two.
On page two, housing goals, number two. I presume that's the HUD guidelines?
That's correct. This is standard goals provided through HUD. I believe we have latitude to modify them to this...
We can add our language in addition to this, I presume?
Correct.
Okay, we'll make sure that that's modified?
Yes. And that carried through, there's some great data in this report, but as we get into the data, the only areas that are really being looked at are issues around race and ethnicity. And we have a number of individuals that have great disadvantage that are not defined solely by those criteria. solely by those criteria.
Mr. Stamps, are you able to assist with the analysis that was done here and the disabilities and criteria looked at for discrimination?
Mr. Stamps?
I apologize. This is Daryl Stamps. I'm having trouble understanding the question. Could you please repeat it?
I'm looking at page 54 and 55, and I see some reference to elderly individuals, disabled individuals, HIV/AIDS, and then a number of charts that reflect ethnicity. HIV/AIDS is not a substitute for addressing the number of people in the LGBTQ community that face discrimination and face disadvantages in housing. And as we know most specifically, in the transgender community, there is significant amounts of housing disadvantages, and I don't see any data here.
Honorable mayor, city council, I am having a very difficult time understanding the question, a very bad connection, but it sounds like the question had to do with whether or not there is an analysis relative to the LGBTQ community. That analysis is typically done in what's called an analysis of impediments to fair housing. I believe that was completed previously. Jay, maybe you could provide specifics on that, but I believe the city already completed their analysis of impediments to fair housing. That's a more comprehensive document that does take a look at race, obviously, national origin, also takes a look at the LGBTQ community as well. So, and this particular document doesn't look at that particular population as relates to housing needs for the community. So there is a difference between the two documents. So hopefully, that answers your question.
It answers the question, it doesn't satisfy in that in this community, housing for our LGBTQ community is something that is critical. And it's disappointing. Thank you.
And it would be good to know, following up on Councilmember Middleton's point, if we actually can include things that, because HUD may not let us include categories where the federal government still believes discrimination is acceptable, unfortunately, but if we can do it, we definitely should. And obviously, California law and our law here in Palm Springs is much more inclusive than the federal government's.
Thank you.
Mayor Potem Holstich?
Thank you. I just have a few questions, and I'm sorry, I got booted off from the Zoom call during the staff report, though I've been online for the whole public hearing. So I just wanted to be clear. So this is when we're selecting, we're reviewing the consolidated plan, the Citizen Participation Plan, the budget, and then the Annual Action Plan. So are we deciding at this moment the use of the funds that's recommended in the staff report? Can you explain a little bit about that and the process, if that's what we're deciding?
We are not deciding the ultimate uses of the funds and the content of the con-plan at this time. This public hearing is required for the city to take public testimony before publishing or making the report available for public review.
So then what the next step would be, we're having another public, second public hearing on May 7th to complete the public review process? And that would be the submittal of the item, so would we finalize the budgeted, you know, allocation then?
That is correct.
So is it important to discuss right now spending, you know, the money on that item? Or should that be at the next meeting?
It can definitely be discussed at this point. It would give staff more insight and direction.
But I would also note that we could put it as a discussion item on the next meeting as well. So this is going to be a 30-day publication review period, but in that 30-day review period, certainly, city council could give us additional direction on the budget. So when we get to the May 7th hearing, it would be, in theory, a budget that would have specific council direction at that hearing on the 7th.
I think that would be helpful. It's hard to do these public hearings, and we're required by law, and we want public input now, but a discussion item might be helpful. I know that, I'm trying to remember back everything we've done on this item, so I know that we had given direction that we wanted to use the new process and that we might want to direct the funds to, you know, city use for the extreme need that we have for a lot of our goals here. But I just would like more information about, you know, how to pick and choose if that's a priority for the community. You know, a lot in the plan and the feedback that we got is the need for housing and homelessness, and that need is only going to increase right now during this crisis. And so I'd like for us to have that discussion about if this is the best use of the funds during this crisis, or if there might be at least, you know, in part, other allocations that we'd want to make.
On the process, if we were to make the document available for public review at this point and then modify the budget to a certain degree, what would be the process from that point moving forward?
If we wanted to, again, I'm really apologized, but I am having very much a difficult time understanding the questions.
Mr. Stamps, just hold for a second, and I'll ask Jay to get closer to the microphone. Come on, no, not that one.
Okay, thank you.
All right, can you hear me okay?
A little bit better, thank you.
Okay, sure. If we were to make the con-plan and annual action plan available for public review now and wanted to change the budget on that con-plan, change where the expenditures were directed, what would be the process from that point moving forward?
Well, we have a couple of options. We can certainly move forward right now and do the 30-day process. If we make what's called a substantial change in the budget, and I refer back to the city's Citizen Participation Plan, and I believe that is 10% change in the budget, then we would have to actually take it back for another public review. However, if we did that, and if there were changes, the HUD has suspended the 30-day review process, and so we can actually, after the completion of the first 30-day review, we can actually do another public review, but that would be only for five days.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that's helpful, and I didn't mean to get into a full process discussion. I think my main question is, and that's the staff, because I missed the staff report, and I'm trying to remember everything that we've talked about in the last two and a half years, we've been talking about this item. So I'm just trying to remember if council gave direction that that should be the specific use of the funds. I know we had talked about that being a priority for possibly Measure J or other funds, but is that the direction that we've already, sort of the full council has given for these funds? Or how, if not, how was that selected?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Potem. We recall informally, we had discussed potential uses of CDBG funds, and so looking at the census tract areas and considering where we could use those dollars for the best good, we were recommending, and for your consideration tonight, is to allocate those funds for those restroom projects at Demuth Park and Sunrise Park. Certainly, we're open to other alternatives if you have them.
Now, the other possibility is, what we could do is, for example, you could continue this public hearing to a time certain. Let's say you continued it to May 7th. Let's just go, this is an idea, if you continued it to May 7th, between now and then, obviously, it would be a discussion item on subsequent meetings, then we would have more formal direction, so then the 30-day would start subsequent to the public hearing. Or it could be the five-day, depending upon how council wants to proceed, given the change in rules. So that's just an option.
Thank you. Happy to hear from my colleagues about what you all think on this. I just was raising the fact that we're in a different place now, and we might have different priorities for the funding based on our goals here. So I don't know if there's consensus or other thoughts about that point, about how to use the fund.
Thank you, and I have just a question for staff. So the bathroom upgrades, are they to make them so they're actually not disgusting as they currently are? Or is it also ADA access and things we're legally required to do?
All of the above.
So they are also ADA requirements? Which I thought, but I wasn't sure. So, I mean, if it's something we're going to have to do anyway, and it's an appropriate use of funds for the census tracts, if we use this money here, frees up potentially Measure J money for other needs. So I think it's one or the other. I'm fine having a broader discussion. I think the things we talked about, as I remember, were the bathrooms and also potentially using it for the boxing club or in addition to the boxing club as a potential. We have the other money still coming in from the state on that, so, but I'm fine. Maybe we move this forward, you know, move it forward and have a discussion item between now and May 7th at the second meeting in April, where we can really have some time to have a more thorough discussion about two or three possible uses and make a decision as a council, and more time for the community to know we're doing that and weigh in, and then still on May 7th, hopefully be able to make a decision. Because I think, given the situation, getting our application in earlier in the process is probably good, given we don't know what's going to be happening with money at the federal level. So that would be my recommendation, is that we move it forward, knowing that after the discussion item, we might change things, but keep it going, if that makes sense.
I think that's great. I would agree to that.
And in the meantime, maybe by that meeting, we could find out the questions Councilmember Middleton was asking about whether we can add city and state nondiscrimination rules and categories into this and not be limited to the limited categories that the federal government recognizes. Because I think that, given our demographics, I think that's a really important point. So can we move that, all that to a discussion item with more information at the second meeting in April, and then if no one else has anything, the motion would be that we... What exactly is the motion you need at this point, then? Anthony, do you know what the...
Jay, that the...
Close to public hearing? And is it just to schedule the next public hearing? And approve and adopt the budget and annual plan?
Correct. Direct staff, as was stated.
Okay. So is it a motion to direct staff as was stated?
Well, as, Mayor, as you had stated with coming back with discussion item on April 23rd, and having the, planning to have the item considered for a second public hearing at the May 7th meeting.
Yeah. Okay. So do we have a motion?
No moves.
Okay, Mayor Potem Holstich?
I'll second.
Second is Councilmember Garner.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Coors?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, Councilmember Middleton, your mic was on mute.
I was, I said yes.
Thank you. Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, so we're at 9:10, and we have one, well, two items, but one item that will be a conversation on evictions. Do people want a bio break? Or do people want to keep going? Anyone need a bio break? Speak now. Okay, let's keep going. So the next item under legislative is item 3A, consideration of adopting a temporary moratorium on evictions resulting from non-payment of rent when caused by COVID-19 pandemic. Staff report, please.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public. On March 4th, 2020, the governor of the state of California declared a state of emergency in the state of California as a result of the threat of the COVID-19 pandemic. The city subsequently issued a shelter-in-place order, and a similar shelter-in-place order was subsequently issued by the state of California. At the city council's March 29th, I'm sorry, March 19th meeting, the city council adopted an urgency ordinance that prohibits landlords from issuing three-day notice to pay rent or quit to their tenants, and that lasted for 14 days. It would expire today unless extended by the city council. Also, on March 16th, Governor Newsom issued executive order N2820, which, among other things, suspended any state laws that would preempt cities' exercise of their police power to impose limitations on residential or commercial evictions if the basis of the eviction is non-payment of rent arising out of a substantial decrease in household or business income or a substantial out-of-pocket medical expense. And under that executive order, the decrease in household or business income had to be documented and caused by a COVID-19 pandemic or a government response to COVID-19. It's important to note that that order did not actually impose eviction moratoria. Instead, it purported to allow cities and counties to issue those. Since that time, a number of cities and counties have, several dozen in fact. Under the executive order, there were certain requirements. The tenant had to be sick with COVID or caring for a household member or family member who was sick with COVID. The tenant had to have, or the tenant would have had to have experienced a layoff, loss of hours, or reduction in job-related income. Another basis would be the tenant's compliance with a recommendation from a government agency to stay at home, self-quarantine, or avoid congregating, or the tenant's need to miss work to care for homebound, school-aged children. Those were the bases for the decrease in income that would allow for non-payment of rent. The city council was presented with a proposed urgency ordinance at the March 19th meeting. A similar ordinance has been brought forward tonight, although some of the text of the ordinance has been revised based on other ordinances that have come forward that the city attorney's office believes would be additions that are worth including. And that's the ordinance that is in the agenda packet tonight. A day after the city council agenda was published for this meeting, Governor Newsom issued another executive order, which actually imposed an eviction moratorium of sorts. So rather than just allowing cities and counties to do it, the executive order did that itself. The second executive order from the governor actually prohibits landlords from evicting tenants for non-payment of rent and prohibits the enforcement of evictions by law enforcement. by law enforcement or courts. The new executive order also requires tenants to declare in writing, no more than seven days after the rent is due, that the tenant cannot pay their rent. Under the Governor's order, the tenant would be required to retain documentation, not necessarily submit it to the landlord, but at least retain it, presumably for subsequent court actions, and the tenant would remain obligated to pay the full rent in a timely manner, and could still face eviction after the moratorium is lifted. Finally, the executive order, the second executive order takes, took effect immediately and provided immediate relief to tenants for whom rent was due on April 1st. I've included in a supplemental staff report some of the key differences and similarities between the proposed ordinance that is before you, as well as the Governor's second executive order. I've also included an analysis under a chart that shows the differences and similarities between this proposed ordinance and some, some other ordinances, including Cathedral Cities, which was recently adopted, the City of Coachella's, and I'm available to, to answer questions about any other ordinances that the council may have become aware of. Notably, this, the proposed ordinance before the City Council tonight applies to both residential and commercial tenancies. The Governor's order only applies to residential tenancies. Under the city's proposed ordinance, a landlord would be prohibited from taking any action toward eviction, and that includes issuing a three-day notice, as well as prosecuting a court action. Under the Governor's order, what it really does is it extends the deadline for a tenant who has been made subject to eviction action to file their response. So the Governor's order would not prohibit a landlord from issuing, for instance, a three-day notice to pay or quit. So I, I thought that was important to note, given the council's previous direction with regard to three-day notices. The proposed ordinance would require the tenant to notify the landlord prior to the date that rent is due of their request to participate in this protection, as opposed to the Governor's order, which allows for up to seven days after the rent is due. Both the proposed ordinance, as well as the Governor's order, maintains the obligation of the, the tenant to pay as they can. So for instance, if the tenant can make payments during the emergency, this proposed ordinance calls on the tenant to do so. The proposed ordinance gives the tenant up to 120 days after the city emergency ends to pay the unpaid rent. Under the Governor's order, it doesn't specifically identify any time period. It simply says that the tenant remains obligated to pay the rent. The proposed ordinance also prohibits landlords from imposing late fees or interest on the tenant, whereas the Governor's order doesn't say anything, which potentially leads to a conclusion that the landlord can impose late fees and interest. One of the other key differences under the state's order is that the tenant must not have been delinquent before March 27th, 2020, whereas the proposed ordinance does not contain any such restriction. I would also point out that, under the City of Coachella's recent ordinance, that they added some provisions that the council might want to consider, including a provision that states that the tenant's submission of documentation to the landlord creates a rebuttable presumption that it supports the tenant's conclusion that they had COVID-related issues in making their payments. That, that summarizes the key differences and similarities. I'm certainly available to answer any questions. I think that the key elements of the ordinance are that this, the proposed ordinance really defers payments by tenants. It doesn't completely wipe out the obligation to pay rent until the emergency ends. And I, I would say that there, there have obviously been strong feelings on both sides. It's a very difficult issue that cities and counties have been struggling with over the last two weeks, and so I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you. So why don't we open it up for questions and comments? Mayor Potem Hostage?
Thank you. I have a number of questions, if I can, for the city attorney or for city staff, and then we can kind of go through the ordinance with the comments. Can you, we got a number of public comments asking for rent forgiveness. Is that something that the city is able to do, in your opinion, or would that lead to any liability? Do you have advice about that issue?
That's a, that's a good question. In my opinion, I think an ordinance that purports to forgive the rent would create legal, legal issues for the city, and that's why you've seen most cities and counties not do this. I, I think you've seen that both the parameters that the Governor's original executive order, as well as his subsequent moratorium that he imposed, they, they all include an obligation of the tenant to pay at some point.
Do you know of any cities or counties that have instituted rent forgiveness programs, or are they all rent deferrals?
I have not heard of a single jurisdiction that did rent forgiveness.
Okay. Thanks. Are we required under the Governor's, so I'm trying to understand how the Governor's order compares with what we're able to do. So does it set a bar or a floor for us? Or we sort of, we're authorized by the, make our own rules on this? For example, the Governor requires verifiable documentation. Do we have to require that?
Good question. I apologize for not covering that. The Governor's order does not purport to preempt cities from adopting more generous provisions, subject obviously to constitutional limitations. So, so yes, we can adopt more, more protective measures for tenants. And so, for instance, ours does not require the verifiable documentation, and doesn't go into the details of what that is.
Ours does require verifiable documentation, right? But it doesn't define it.
Correct.
Thanks. And then, so I saw that our ordinance applies only if tenants, it sounds like only if tenants notify their landlord ahead of when rent is due. I know it's April 2nd, so when rent was already due for the majority of people, so then if we do it that way, would it not apply to April?
It would not apply to, to April's payment, no. And I would point out that a number of other jurisdictions have provided a later date.
Thank you. I saw that it, the staff report explains that the city manager could suspend the local ordinance if a similar federal or state law is adopted. I saw that Coachella got rid of that part of the ordinance. Could we require it to come back to the city council?
Yes, you could, and, and that is probably a remnant of the fact that this ordinance was drafted and, and published before the Governor's order, so absolutely, you could, you could modify that.
Thank you. And then I just have some practical questions about the documentation, and maybe the council can discuss this unless you have any input. But I'm wondering, for all the different financial impacts or reasons that we're allowing, you know, that we might allow people to qualify under this ordinance, specifically what kind of documentation, you know, would be provided or required if someone needed to, you know, self-quarantine, or comply with a state order, or have to take care of a household member? So I understand the income thing is easy because you have your pay stub and then you don't, or it's reduced, you know, hard to prove the absence of a pay stub, right? So I'm just trying to think through if you've seen any, what is the best practices, or how does the state or others define what documentation even is?
I do think, I do think some guidance is provided by the Governor's second executive order that, that specifies what that type of documentation is. So it would include termination notices, payroll checks, pay stubs, bank statements, medical bills, signed letters from employers or supervisors. Those are some examples of what we might want to tear off of if we want to get more specific in our ordinance.
Thanks. I saw all of those, but they all really seem to go to the financial impact, or maybe if you're personally directly affected and you have access to your health records. But it didn't quite seem to cover all of the, you know, factors. And I think I just have one more question. You know, I've litigated these cases. I've, I've done a number of them. I've represented tenants and also landlords in eviction cases, many more tenants. So I'm wondering, have any cities, or could we include like a ban on pretextual eviction? So often what happens is a landlord or someone might serve, you know, a different type of notice. So not a three-day notice to pay or quit, but a three-day notice for violating the rules, or for cause, or, you know, a no-cause eviction, where they just can evict for no reason, giving notice. So is there a way that we could include, I assume they might already be, you know, banned, but thinking through, like, how do we make sure that people aren't going through other channels? If we're only limiting non-payment of rent notices, how do we make sure that people don't just use all the other types of notices to evict tenants?
I'm, I suppose we could include here other categories. Both of the Governor's executive orders and the vast majority of the ordinances that other agencies have, have adopted deal specifically with non-payment of rent for purposes of, or based on COVID-related impacts. I suppose we could, we could include in, in the coverage no-fault evictions and pretextual evictions. I think that would probably be based on an assumption that a landlord is, is trying to get rid of their tenants, when I'm, I don't know if, if, if there's evidence to, to think that landlords would want to do that, given the, given the economy and, and what's happening out there. But you could do it.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Those are all the questions I have.
Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions for the city attorney. If we issue an ordinance that exceeds what the governor is requiring, do we need to make findings that justify those differences with what the governor has imposed?
No, I don't think we do. Because the Governor's order doesn't purport to preempt cities, I, I don't think we would need to make specific findings. The ordinance before you does make findings with regard to just the ordinance in general, but I don't think we need to make targeted findings on the differences between the executive order and this ordinance.
So it's your view that we have broad discretion in this area?
Yes.
Okay. And you say that if we were to do a forgiveness, that, that would create legal issues. Is it, does that become a taking?
That's the type of legal issue that I, I believe it would, it would cause, yes.
What less than forgiveness, in your mind, would still constitute a taking, a taking, if anything?
You know, unfortunately, taking's law is so amorphous that I don't think there's a clear answer. I, I would say several months beyond the 120 days that is proposed would probably still be defensible, but I think once you get too far out, you know, over a year or so, I think you start running into issues.
Okay. And all of this comes back to a issue that there is a direct relationship between the financial inability to pay the rent and the COVID-19 healthcare crisis. Is that true?
Correct, under the proposed ordinance.
And so, there does need to be documentation that would have to be produced, that documents and verifies that there is that direct connection. So an individual who has not lost income would not qualify for relief under this program. Is that correct?
Correct, not under this ordinance.
Right. Thank you.
Let me just ask a follow-up, if I could, quickly. So, if someone couldn't work, well, so if they couldn't work due to needing to do childcare, that would fit, right?
Correct.
It's just as drafted, of course. Okay. Thank you. Who wants to go next? Councilmember Woods?
Just a quick question. We're, this is a proposed ordinance, which means it needs to come back for a second reading. Is that correct?
Good question. This is a proposed urgency ordinance, which means that it would only have one action, and that's tonight's action. If you want to make it effective immediately, it will require a four-fifths vote to make it effective immediately. Theoretically, you could make it a regular ordinance, but that would, that regular ordinance then would have to come back at a subsequent meeting, and then would not take effect for another 30 days. So this is an urgency ordinance.
Okay. And then the other question I had was, which is, is, which Councilmember, Councilwoman Hostage brought up, was the fact that, of, this is April 2nd, but we had a moratorium in place already that the two would overlap. Is that correct? If we passed it?
The, the previous moratorium ordinance prevented three-day notices, so yes, if, if an eviction was, was filed based on a three-day notice that was provided during that moratorium, then there would be some overlap, yes.
Okay. So someone would fall through the cracks?
However, a tenant may not have provided notice to their tenant before April 1st, and under the proposed ordinance, they would have to in order to get the protection of this ordinance.
Okay. Great. I think that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Councilmember Garner?
I don't have any questions, just comments, or whenever.
No, we're doing it all together.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's not a public hearing.
Okay. Well, I, I just had comments about how the, what I thought should be edited, or added, or changed in this. I think it probably would make sense to just discuss it kind of down this chart that the city attorney gave us. I don't want to jump around too much and then cause confusion. So, I think the, the first thing is kind of the definition of financial impact and the, what we need to, what a tenant would have to provide. And I think for that, I do understand wanting to provide some sort of documentation to, to show that there's been an impact. However, I think that we need to be more broad in what those, that those things are, because right now, what we're, we're dealing with is a lack of testing. So it's not like someone can come to their landlord and say, here's my test results, I have COVID-19. They don't, they, we, they can't, especially if their symptoms don't require them to be hospitalized. And there will certainly be plenty of people who are just very ill, but not ill enough to go to the hospital. So, I basically would like, and I'm also thinking about people who are undocumented, workers who might not- who might not have those pay stubs and certain things like that, that somebody else might, like I would have. So I want to just make it broad enough and kind of put the burden on the landlord to say that this information isn't enough, rather than put the burden on the tenant, if I'm, I think I'm saying that correctly. If we can just discuss that first, I would appreciate it.
I think if the council, if the council wanted to create kind of, forgive me for the legalese, but kind of a burden-shifting method where the tenant can make an assertion, and that would be kind of automatic evidence that the landlord would then have to rebut, we could do that.
Mr. Mayor, should we go back and forth, or how do you want to ask, you know, discuss it?
No, let's just keep this open, so we don't have to come back and forth on each issue. So if an issue is brought up, if Councilmember Garner is going through it, let's do that. And if something else we want to add, we can do that after. Let's try and do it in order, so if you have something else, jump in.
That's great. Okay, thank you. Did I interrupt the city attorney? I'm sorry, I can't see you speaking.
I think I was done. I indicated that we could create kind of a burden-shifting program for, or arrangement for the evidence that's necessary.
Great. So personally, in my experience doing these cases, I do agree that it's extremely burdensome for tenants to provide a lot of documentation. Tenant, low-income tenants, you know, don't have access to a printer or a computer to email, you know, often to get those documents. Our libraries are closed. There's a lot of restrictions right now about people's access to documents. We also have, you know, employers who don't provide wage subs, pay subs like they're required. So there's, if we are requiring documentation, just so we know, we're putting the burden on the most affected people to really prove their cases. And to do it ahead of the request of the notice, I think is very, very difficult for at least the very low-income people who are significantly affected, who we want to protect. So I would support, I mean, either documentation on request by the landlord. Some people are going to be really obviously affected. If you're a landlord and you have a house cleaner or a worker at, you know, a nonessential business, a service worker who's shut down, it's obvious that their income is reduced or that they can't afford rent. And so, again, like to offer documentation on request and/or a rebuttable presumption, that their documentation is sufficient. The issue that you're going to see practically is when all of these go to court. At the end of this, it's going to be attorneys, and I've been in eviction court, and only landlords have attorneys there. Attorneys are going to nitpick if the documentation was sufficient. And you're going to see a lot of that, that it wasn't sufficient, or that it wasn't on time, and then tenants will lose their cases for that reason. And I'd hate to see people evicted because they didn't get a pay stub for their employer or something like that. So I think that's a good compromise, either a presumption, just like Coachella did, I think is a great solution, or, and including documentation on request.
Anything else on that issue? Anyone else wants to share? Councilmember Middleton?
I'm going to jump in. I think there does need to be documentation provided. And to simply make an assumption that in each and every incident, for instance, for every renter, that the, we need to shift the obligation to the landlord, I don't believe that's realistic. There are going to be instances where providing documentation is going to be difficult, and I want to create exceptions that allow for those individuals that can't, but to work from the premise that someone who has an obligation to pay their rent need not provide documentation to their landlord as to why they're not able to pay their rent. Most specifically, since these are economic issues, and someone who had worked would be able to document that they were working, and now they're not working. So we have an obligation to have a connection to COVID-19, and simply asking that a renter come forward and present to their landlord why they're unable to pay, I don't think is a burden. If it becomes a specific burden in an individual instance, then let's find a process to address that.
So my concern with doing it by cases like that is that often people who probably need the most help are not going to be able to even realize that this is something they can get help. Who are they supposed to go to? What are those instances? I feel like it can get, there can be so many instances that that would apply, and then it becomes difficult to determine who qualifies for that and who doesn't. I like Mayor Proten Hostage's idea that the landlord can ask for documentation, because I think that, like she said, there are going to be so many people that the landlord already knows, oh, yes, Susan, you know, worked at Cheeky's and she doesn't have a work anymore. That's going to be, you know, obvious for some of the landlords. The landlord probably wouldn't even need documentation in that case, right? Because he knows this, or she knows this. But if they don't know, or if they feel like there might be some issue, being able to just ask the tenant for paperwork doesn't seem like too difficult of a thing to request on their end.
I think we're both saying that documentation needs to come forward. In one instance, it's the tenant that needs to provide it to the landlord, and the other, we're asking the landlord to, has a right to insist on it. So I'm going to come back to the same question. I think you have to have an obligation to provide documentation as to your inability to pay. And there has to be a connection of that inability to pay to COVID-19.
You know, we're trying to get to a four-fifths vote on this, is what I'm assuming, to make this pass, right? And I think that Councilwoman Middleton has a strong point that she's made, and I think there's some validity to that. There has to be, obviously, there has to be communication that still exists between the renter and the landlord. That level of communication for somebody who is poor does not mean that they're necessarily ignorant. And they obviously know that they're affected by COVID-19. I don't know, I'm just, I'm just trying to get to the four-fifths vote so that we can have something on the books that actually will give some sort of protection to renters. I'm also concerned, as we go to this, you know, I don't want to vilify landlords either. I have friends who are small landlords, who own a house or two that they rent, and it's their livelihood, you know, which is kind of, it's not a big corporation necessarily. It's all the landlords all the time. And although they may have access under some of the state and federal programs that are coming out to get a low-interest loan, those loans still have to be paid back with an interest rate attached to them. And we are waiving any sort of, or the ordinance would be waiving any sort of late fee or penalties, so the landlord would already be taking a financial hit of some sort if the tenant didn't pay on time, if they were an individual landlord with a small grouping of homes or whatnot. It's just a different perspective. I appreciate everything that's being said. I'm just trying to get to four-fifths.
Yes, that's where we have to get to, and we'll have a lot of issues to come. So I want to make a couple of comments. One, I do want to follow up on something Councilmember Woods just said, since we heard something from someone who is a landlord. I haven't heard anyone on this council or any public comment saying that landlords are bad or evil, or anything along those lines. I don't believe anyone in the city council believes that. And that's not what my experience. I've talked to a number of landlords, both commercial corporations, and people who, they rent a unit in their duplex, and their life savings is this, and they can't pay the mortgage if they don't get the rent, and everything in between. So we have a real range of people who are landlords, and ultimately, everyone has to figure out how we're going to make this work for everyone. We don't want landlords to be foreclosed on, and they typically, but not always, are going to have access to mortgage being delayed, but sometimes those mortgages are sold and not in the bank anymore. So there are a whole bunch of issues, and it's, look, everyone needs to be together to figure something out to help. But no one should be losing their residence or the business that they have because of COVID-19. And that's where I think we need to get, however we get there. On this one, I think we need to, one, separate residential, which is, I think, what we're talking about with commercial, because most, in the commercial area, any business is going to be able to show that they fall under the nonessential order and are getting no money and not paying rent. So I think that's, you know, that's the easier one, probably. On this one, at the very least, the tenant needs more time than before rents do. It needs to be a week or 10 days. And I would think they have to at least give notice and say, why? I mean, to me, that's sort of the middle ground here. The tenant has to notify within a week or 10 days, we can pick the date, explaining why related to COVID-19, they can only pay part of their rent, or they can't pay any rent. And if the landlord then wants something more than the tenant's word, they can request it. So I think there should at least be something affirmative from the tenant explaining the reasons. It's for this reason, which I think is where Councilmember Middleton wanted, was trying to get to, but not requiring to actually go out and try and get documentation that, it's really hard to get. If your business is, if your employer is closed, there's no one who's going to be able to send you payroll stubs. I talked to one landlord who has an apartment building, who has, you know, someone who, right, they're an artist. They can't sell work because no one's buying things. They have no documentation, other than, you know, they can get their bank statement showing no money came into it. So I think explaining the reason. I think most landlords are really trying to work with their tenants. We've seen that. Michael Braun is working with all his tenants. But there are other landlords in our commercial districts who are saying you still have to pay 100% of your rent. So I think the tenant should have the affirmative duty to explain the reason, and then the landlord can ask for more documentation if they want it. Might be where we can get a compromise here.
I can mark that. What we're trying to get is a conversation taking place between the renter and the landlord. And what we know is that that frequently resolves the issue. Landlords do not want to lose good renters and want to work with them through tough times. And by the same token, we know that there are landlords that are doing everything they can to work with their renters, and we also know that there are renters who are doing everything that they can to pay the rent. And when they don't have a job, they're not in a position to be able to do so. What we're trying to do here is get things back to maintain people in the situation they were in before the COVID-19 crisis hit. I don't think this is the opportunity to try to fix every issue that's ever existed between landlords and renters dating back for years and decades. It's how do we keep people whole through this emergency?
So Mayor, you kind of brought in the timing of that. I think it sounds like maybe we have a little bit of agreement on that first part. And so I wanted to just move on to that notification. So I've, initially, I think that there's going to be a little bit of, it's going to take some time for people to understand that what we're doing, what we passed, especially when we're talking about low-income tenants or tenants in the service industry who don't necessarily watch our meetings, and we don't get comments from them at the same rate we do from our homeowners, for instance. So I would propose that initially, that there's 30 days to provide notice about inability to pay rent. And then after that, it would need to be prior to the date. So for instance, for April, we're giving everybody a month to get on board, for everyone to figure out what's going on. And then, if you still can't pay your rent, May 1st, June 1st, because this continues to extend on, then yes, you need to be able to give a notice again before May 1st that says, hey, I still can't pay my rent. And the same thing after that. But it's initially, as we've seen with rolling out anything in the city, it takes a long time for people to figure out what we're doing. I still get questions on things that we rolled out months and months ago, and I think, where have you been? But honestly, just, everybody's busy. Everybody has very different methods of communication. And so we just, we really need to be able to tell people that this is happening, and that we are taking care of them.
So one question, Councilmember Garner, because I think that makes sense, actually. I can agree with that and like that idea. I would think for commercial, we could make it less, because I think it's a different situation.
Agreed.
Yeah, okay. But I think for residential, I think that's true. We know there are people who don't have internet access or device to get the internet right now. I've heard from seniors who are not, you know, have no way to order anything, and we're working with staff on figuring out how to bridge that digital divide during this crisis, because it could go on for months. But I think, you know, 30 days in the first month, but in May, you have to let them know by the date the rent is due. On the residential side is reasonable. Anyone else have a different or another thought on that?
I'm just thinking through. So a lot of people and a lot of leases provide, I like the suggestion. I think it's a great idea. I agree with you that it's going to take a ramp-up period, and then people are going to hopefully know more about it and comply. I'm just looking at Cathedral City did five days after rent is due. A lot of leases, though in Palm Springs, a lot of people are month-to-month, but a lot of leases and a lot of landlords allow you to pay, you know, up until five days after. Not a lot, you know, not everyone has to absolutely pay on the first. A lot of people struggle and figure out how they're going to pay on the first or the second or the third, and then they pay. So in my experience representing a lot of people on this issue, a lot of people are paying like in those days and not exactly the first. So though I support that, I might ask that we consider at least some leeway period, so that when people are getting their rent together, they have some time to figure out, you know, hey, I know I've represented so many low-income people who always pay on the fifth, the last day, that there aren't fees for paying late, right? So I think a lot of people are scrapping it together at that time. I think the first or before rent is due is a very strict requirement that doesn't give a lot of leeway at all, if people are just learning about it. But I'm open to talking about that more.
I'm trying to understand pragmatically how this would work. If I had rent due on April 1st, I would have until May 1st to notify my landlord that I'm not able to pay my rent either in full or partially because of some loss from COVID-19. And then I would have another 10 days from May 1st until May 10th before I had to provide them notice on why I wasn't paying the month of May's rent.
And I think until May 5th.
Why 30 days? An entire month?
Partly because we're still seeing the effects of all of this. Things have still been shifting.
Things have still been shifting, um, and it just protects people a little bit more. Um, I think if we decided on a shorter time period, um, we just, the, the shorter the time period, the, the tougher the burden it is for the tenant. And, um, we're still not reaching all of our residents in our, in our outreach. We're reaching lots of people and it's getting better every day, but we haven't yet crossed that, that bridge to reach everybody. And, and that's just my concern. Um, but I think once you know about it, yeah, then, then you don't, then you need to start complying. You've learned about it. There's no reason to continue to expend it for a significant amount of time.
The concern is that, uh, many people are misinterpreting this moratorium as a, uh, rent for business and I don't have to pay my rent. And, uh, what will happen is, uh, they will not have paid their rent in, uh, in April under that misimpression that I don't have any obligation to pay it regardless of whether there was a COVID-19, uh, connection or not. And, uh, so they don't reach out to their landlord. And the landlord has no ability until, uh, a month down the road to even ask them, why aren't you paying your rent?
So I, to, to just like come together on this a little bit, I think that it's important to provide tenants some time to get this information and to comply with it. I think that there's probably lots of tenants already that are contacting their landlords and telling them that they can't pay their rent this month. I'm sure that's already happening. Um, but I do want to just make sure that anybody who isn't quite there kind of gets swept up in this. Um, but I also don't think that anything that we would be passing would be preventing a landlord from asking their tenant about what's going on with rent. I mean, I, I certainly nothing that we've seen would prevent that from happening. So if the landlord wanted to ask and say, hey, you know, where is it? Or is it something going on, they could certainly ask and, and hopefully this information would get to landlords, um, as well quickly and that then they would be able to say, hey, this is what's going on and let their tenants know as well.
Yeah, you know, I think most people in my experience, um, I've represented hundreds of low income people in Palm Springs. In my experience, most people are good people and want to pay their rent. All of the people that I've talked to so far, my friends and family members who've lost all their income during this time, um, and they may be, everyone's living paycheck to paycheck, they, they still want to pay their rent, um, this month, uh, even though they don't know how they're going to have any income. And I think most landlords are, are good too. I don't think anyone's vilifying landlords. Um, personally, I'm a landlord and a tenant. Um, so, you know, to put pit us against each other is just, it's not an us versus them. We're all in this together. It's going to take everyone. Most people in Palm Springs are complying with the ordinance. Most people are going to pay their rent under this. Most landlords are going to informally work with their tenants so that they can do, um, payment plans and things like that. Um, what, what we're doing is we're protecting the most vulnerable and there are landlords in Palm Springs. Um, I've seen those units, I've worked with those landlords. So they're, they're just not going to offer any, um, support. So the reason that the time period is important is a lot of people's income is uncertain. So for example, my household income is based on real estate deals and it could be that we think something's coming through, um, and we think we can pay rent and then a check bounces or an escrow falls through and then we don't have that income. So that's why, you know, I'm open to how many days this council thinks it should be, but the reason why it can't be, um, before rent is due is because it puts all of the burden on the tenants, um, who are trying to come up with that money. And look, landlords want their tenants to stay. It's extremely expensive for landlords to lose tenants and then have to re-lease those, right? So I think everyone's going to work together, but the period of time before rent is due, um, having a little extra cushion is really, really important to help people when our incomes are so uncertain during this time.
You know, I, um, I, I would agree with that. I, I think that having say before the rent is due, it seems to be a little bit unrealistic and giving some amount of time after the rent is due seems very reasonable to me. Um, but I have a question for the attorney, um, or city attorney Jeff. Um, how long is this enacted for, the entire time? And what if somebody doesn't pay for four or five months? Are, are, are we, are we really allowing them not to pay for that, that, that amount of time if this goes on that long?
The ordinance currently is, uh, is drafted to extend until June 4th. Uh, if the emergency is, uh, extended beyond June 4th, uh, then the council would have an opportunity to extend this, uh, but it's currently only going to June 4th.
So with that in mind, if somebody were, were unable to pay in April, unable to pay in May, they could defer, they could basically have a, a two or three month deferral of their rent?
It, it, it's six, they would have six months after the end of the, uh, emergency. So say the emergency ended in June, they would have six months to pay that rent back.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. So where are we on this one?
Do you want to do a consistent period of time for every month or is there consensus? Do you want to do one month separately? I think personally, I'm open to either. I think personally having different rules for different months is confusing, um, for landlords, um, and for tenants who, who just want to understand the rule and follow one rule. Um, it just might make it complicated. Um, though I agree, we should parse out residential and commercial for each item because I think they're very different since commercial businesses who can, uh, give notice and, and more easily have all those burdens on them.
Something the council might want to consider is making it 15 days after rent is due. That would, uh, be somewhat of a middle ground. It would still provide sufficient time for the city to get information out so the tenants are aware of it even for the April payment, uh, and they can at least approach their, their landlord. Um, but it's also not so long that, um, it would, it would unduly burden the, the landlords.
I would support that.
That's fine.
Yeah, I think that's a good compromise. And I do think most tenants who are in a bind right now, the vast majority, even if they don't know we're doing this, are going to want to talk to their landlord and the landlord's going to try and reach out to them. So I think this is a good, reasonable compromise. If not first choice. Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
And with, um, commercial tenants? Within five days?
What was the governor's for, for residential? The governor was five or seven? What was the governor's?
The governor's was seven and it's, there's nothing for commercial from the governor.
Right.
Right. So just to be consistent, could we do seven days for commercial?
Sure. Yep.
Same with me.
Okay.
Can we go back, um, up on the spreadsheet one? Um, so I noticed that this is the definition of financial impact. Um, I noticed that the governor's order required, and Cathedral City as well, required substantial loss of business income. They use the word substantial versus, um, ours is just loss, any and all loss. Um, on one hand, I'm hesitant to add anything that will be litigated. So, right, we don't want to, don't define substantial loss as vague and, um, it'll be litigated about if 25% of your income is substantial or not. Um, but I just wanted to point that out. Um, I don't know if the city attorney has advice there about, um, why we did loss of income versus substantial loss, especially for commercial, um, tenants. Then probably any commercial tenant can have any loss at all, um, versus the governor requiring substantial loss. I don't know if they define that at all.
There isn't a definition of substantial. Um, I think the thinking was that we, we wouldn't want tenants to try to avoid paying their rent based on a, a small loss of, of income or business revenue. Um, I think some of that is, uh, dealt with, uh, by the fact that this ordinance, uh, still requires the tenant to pay as much as they can. Um, and, and we saw that in Cathedral Cities as well. Um, and so, uh, I think that, that helps ameliorate that issue.
Okay, that's fine with me unless anyone else has any issues with that.
Well, I think that's the right direction to go. The amount of rent relief that someone has should be commensurate with the amount of financial loss that they have.
It's hard. I'm okay with how it's written in the ordinance because it says tenants are obligated to pay their rent, um, and that the, I forget the language, we could pull it. The problem is only correlating the rent with income leaves out a lot of other costs. So it leaves out, for example, if people are hospitalized, uh, for COVID-19. Um, I also saw Cathedral City included, uh, substantial medical bills related to the pandemic or medical treatment. Um, so the problem is even if I get, you know, I'm getting say 10% of my household income, um, and right, so if you correlate it directly, however, if I'm hospitalized and I don't have health insurance and I have to pay 30 grand, um, you know, there's other calculations in a family's budget than just, you know, income and rent. So I think how it's written, it's fine. Um, but I, I do want us to at least think about the medical costs and expenses that are state care and childcare costs that a lot of people are incurring too. There's a lot of extra costs with the pandemic.
The concern of the council, what we can do in the definition is we can say it means a tenant's loss of income or increase in costs.
Yeah, expense, increase expenses.
Correct.
Yeah.
Due to COVID-19.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
And I have one question, so on the commercial side, just as we tie this. So there's a certain portion of the emergency loan that's forgiven and treated like a grant for businesses? If it covers payroll, I think rent utilities, do we have any information on that? Because if someone's getting the rent treated as a grant, they should be paying the rent, right? If they're getting rent paid by the federal government, they shouldn't then not pay the rent to the landlord.
I did see that, I did see that in a recent model ordinance, uh, that the mayor pro tem shared with me. Uh, the county of San Mateo, uh, included something to that effect where a landlord who receives, uh, in that case, certain assistance, um, that assistance would be essentially, um, deducted from, uh, the, or credited towards the, the tenant's rent that they have to repay.
Yeah, I think that would make sense because if, given the federal government is giving small businesses the ability to get some of those costs and then treat it like a grant if they actually spend it on those purposes, then they should, that should go to the landlord, obviously.
I agree.
Okay. Anyone have? What's next?
Uh, I think what's next is the time period or the time period to repay. Um, so for that, right now it says 120 days. Um, I think that it should be longer and the, the big reason for that is that we don't, there's kind of two things to this. One, say, everything is done by June 1st, we start to reopen. As we've seen in other countries, things don't immediately go back to normal. It's going to be a gradual process. We might even see that restaurants have to run at half capacity at first and then they'll slowly start to ramp up to more. We're also going to immediately hit our summer season where hopefully we'll get some more tourists just because people might be itching to get out, but we, we might not. People might still be scared and staying home and we'll have an even, um, worse summer than we usually do. So, um, I feel like we need to be really flexible in the payback, but we can always require that the tenants are directly working with their landlords on this payment and, and making sure that they're making regular payment of this back rent. Um, but I, I just think it's very uncertain how quickly people are going to have a job and, and income coming in. And the other thing is that we're deferring lots of payments right now. And so then it's not only that you're paying your rent, but it's suddenly that you're now back to paying your student loans and back to paying your other utility bills and, and any, if you took out a loan and that, that bills kind of can pile up. Um, and so I think for us as a city, we have control over this, um, but we don't have control over a lot of those other costs. So being able to give people extra time to pay, I think would be really helpful, provided that they are giving regular payments and working with their landlord. And that would be, that's the accountability piece.
Yeah, I mean, this is tough. Um, I think 120 days seems short, but you also, right, the flip side of course is landlords are going to be, they have their mortgage, the counties, it's not us who does property taxes, the county's charging property taxes, they're still paying insurance, they have all those costs. So it's just, I don't disagree, I'm just concerned that we're, what the consequences are, and I agree, there's not much we can do on those. I do want us, um, as part of this at the end to really, um, if we can do this for the city attorney, take some positions about advocating to the governor about really pushing back any mortgage payments, um, both commercial and residential, uh, and advocating through our congressman as well because without that, we really could see especially smaller landlords be foreclosed on and that doesn't help the tenant or anyone. So I'm not disagreeing that we need more time and just really concerned about the other consequences here.
I think we, uh, we need to take this in smaller bites to, uh, to guess now as to whether or not, uh, 120 days is too short or too long, uh, is something that, uh, that we just don't know. What we want to have is, uh, landlords and lenders and renters all talking to one another. And our efforts here should be to ensure that, uh, good faith conversation is taking place between all of the parties. Uh, and, uh, uh, so there has to be something that comes out of this that, uh, incentivizes each group to know that I have an obligation, uh, to work with, uh, with the others.
I, I, um,
A shorter period of time, we can always extend it. But once we get out 120 days or even longer, uh, it's going to be almost impossible to bring it back to anything shorter.
I, uh, I would agree with Councilmember Middleton. Um, I, we certainly don't want to see anybody be homeless through this process. And I think that's what everyone is fighting for, um, with this ordinance. I think we're, and I say fighting because I think we're all trying to really work to get an ordinance that, that really will protect people. Um, but I do think 120 days, um, uh, is a good amount of time. I think we can extend it if we need to, but it basically is giving a tenant a free loan for a very long period of time, um, as well, uh, of which the landlord somehow has to make that up. So I, I, to me, 120 days seems reasonable, at least at this initial stage. We really don't know how this whole pandemic is going to play out. We just, I mean, we just learned until June 19th, they just redefined short-term rentals as 60 days or less, where we've always defined it as 28 days or less. I mean, things are changing by the hour. Um, and I think we need to, to make sure if we had an ordinance that it is flexible enough that we can change it in the future. And I think we need to, to make sure if we had an ordinance that it is flexible enough that we can change it in the future.
I think, you know, given, and I think it's the county you said, right, no, and I think it applies to hotels too, right? No non-COVID-19 short-term through June 19th. That means we know for certain, if that is what it says, a huge chunk of our workforce will not be working from March, April, May, and June. And we'll have very little work in the summer. Many of our businesses will be therefore closed through June and may not even make sense to open for the summer. The thought that people are able to pay that back in four months is not realistic unless there's more federal and state money coming, right? I mean, fortunately, on unemployment, there's an extra 600 a week plus the state unemployment for the people who have a documentation to be able to get that. But obviously, that's not everyone in our city either. So I think 120 days, no one who's not making money for four months is going to be able to pay double rent for four months. And that's where, you know, it's a problem for everyone. We have to figure it out together. I could find starting saying four months, knowing in a month we could revisit this as we know more of a deadline to get this, because we need four of us. But I'd be more inclined to go for six months to start because I just, I don't think it's realistic. So to have someone think that they're going to somehow not work and not have money coming in and be able to pay everything back, four months back rent in four months, it's just, it's setting everyone up for a failure. That's my concern there.
Yeah, I, I agree completely. You know, and I agree with your comment about contacting our elected officials about mortgage relief for commercial and for, it sounds like there's not currently mortgage relief for, you know, rental properties and things like that. You know, it's hard because this is just kicking the can. The federal government is kicking the can down the road for small businesses who have to take out loans, for low, you know, residents who, who can take out a loan for four months or three months of rent and then pay it back. I personally could not afford that. And so that's, that's really hard. So hopefully we'll get a lot more relief. Unfortunately, sorry, diatribe, the unemployment benefit is just not sufficient because there are millions of claims and people aren't going to get those benefits until May or June. I'm really concerned that any of those are going to be processed. You cannot currently get through to EDD. But that being said, so I might propose, I support the time period that, that you said, Mayor. I personally, I, I see that ours says 120 days or we're talking about days after the city emergency ends. You know, it's, that's what I'm struggling with too. I, I prefer a firm date where we will revisit this or a firm date wherein, when it will expire. And I understand it's dependent on the, the emergency. But I think it leaves it really open for tenants and landlords who then don't have notice about when they'll have to pay rent and when that might start coming due. And people are going to have to start, I mean, if you can't afford your rent right now, but you're going to have a balloon payment in four months or six months for quadruple or six times your rent, you hope, hopefully people can keep paying. But you're going to have to start saving and planning for that right now. So I saw that San Mateo did that. It seems like an arbitrary deadline because I think they put May, May 31st, unless extended, it looks like what the state and Cathedral so end of effectiveness. Anyway, so I don't know. Those are my thoughts. I see that it's actually, it looks like everyone did a certain amount of days after the emergency ends. But, but I agree that it's a big, big chunk to then not kind of bring it back to reconsider where people are at because we don't know what it'll look like in a month or in three months or in six months.
Yeah. And we don't know what federal and state money may be coming in for folks.
Right. We hope a lot, lot more for everyone.
Absolutely.
So what was the proposal? So it was six months? Is that right, Mayor?
Four.
After the emergency order is lifted. I don't know if we have four people on that, but we can see.
I support that.
You know, I don't, I'm sorry, I, I don't mind the, the six months. I, I, I want to go back to what I think several people have said already is we don't want it to be a balloon. You know, hopefully people are communicating and paying partial or whatever they can do in the process. I mean, that, that I think is our ultimate goal. There may be some that are ballooning out on, on, you know, because they can't pay anything. I, I, I would like to think that that's going to be few and far between, that it is a possibility. So if, I would, I could support six months if necessary here.
I think the, one thing, the next thing, it says end of effectiveness. Right now it says June 4th. I'm not sure where that date came from, but we do know now that date.
Was June 4th? Because do we have a council meeting on June 4th?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes, we have, that's a council meeting date. So if.
Then that's, then that's fine.
So let's leave that and we can always revisit.
Yep.
Right?
So then the, the other thing that I wanted to, to raise and that Mayor Protem Holstich has already kind of discussed briefly, is this the pretextual? And one of the big reasons that I would like to discuss that and include that is we did get a public comment from, from Daryl Torell. And one of the things that he mentioned in it is not evicting people or faulting people for changes in their circumstances based on additional people in their home who may be not allowed otherwise under the lease or pets, for instance, in the home that are not otherwise under the lease. There are other things that are, would other, would be considered a nuisance, but because of this crisis, giving people that leeway. And I think that's really important because I could easily see, you know, that family members might need to move in together temporarily in order to take care of one another or something like that. Or, and the same thing, if they're, if they have to move in and they have a pet, then the pet comes too, those kinds of things. And then the other thing, of course, noise. I know that, I think it's the, the governor made an executive order waiving a lot of noise ordinance requirements in order to do deliveries. And I think it would be similar here. We don't, it's not saying that people can have parties in their places or anything, but just that if there's an increased level of noise because somebody has to move their family in because they have nowhere else to go, that kind of thing shouldn't be an automatic ding against the tenant and then have them be evicted for that reason. So I would, I'd like to, to take, bring those, those into this as well.
Yeah, I think that's really, really important. And I just want to applaud Daryl for his comments and his edits to the ordinance. They're, they're in the public record and they're really incredible and I think really, really important. So that's something I personally hadn't thought about, but I, I've done cases where people are being evicted because they violate their HOA rule or their, yeah, residency rule about who can be in their unit or because of pets or because of noise or nuisance that, you know, is just alleged. So it, people get broadly, you know, landlords will generally always pursue non-payment of rent because it's a three-day notice. But you can also do a three-day notice for cause versus other ones. But if three-day notices are unavailable essentially, some, very few landlords, but, but, you know, there will be people who will pursue other types of eviction notices and eviction cases. And there's, there are essentially no eviction defense attorneys in the entire Coachella Valley. So we pay, we fund Fair Housing Council. And by the way, we should really plug their services and think about how to expand them in Palm Springs during this time because to council member Middleton's point, Fair Housing Council works to mediate cases between landlords and tenants. So that's going to be really important during this time because it's all going to be mediation instead of litigation for now. But, but tenants can't get representation in court for these cases. So we have to think about the backend of what's going to happen when the floodgates open.
So I think we have to be careful here. What we are dealing with is an emergency. And that emergency is caused by COVID-19. And someone who's creating additional noise, moving family members in to a home is, is certainly one thing. And that's a very short period of time. But to broadly eliminate every protection or every reason why someone would be evicted from their home, I think is, is overly broad and not responsive to, to the emergency that we're dealing with here.
I, I.
I'm happy to discuss all of those other issues in context of broader tenant landlord relationships, but not as part of an emergency ordinance.
So I, I agree with you as far as discussing it. I think it should be related to COVID-19. I don't think that if there's somebody who's in flagrant violation of, of all of our social distancing, just inviting all their friends over and causing problems, yeah, that's different. I, but I do, I, I think they should have to show that it's related, that if they have more people in their home living there, it's because of COVID-19. If there's a pet that it's not supposed to usually be there, it's because of COVID-19. So, yeah, I do think there should, they should have to be able to provide a reason should the landlord ask.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that's important. You don't want someone not to be able to be evicted if they're partying with their friends till 2:00 in the morning or someone selling drugs out of their unit or other reasons that are not related to COVID-19. That would, I think, be too far here, given that. And related to this though is also, because I've gotten some emails, a couple of these. So, you know, someone entered into a short-term, not our 28-day short-term, but several-month lease with someone on their unit while they were out of town and they, it ended, they're moving back and now the tenant doesn't want to leave saying, we have a moratorium. I presume people, or they signed a lease with someone else, right? Because the tenant's lease was over. So now those folks wouldn't have a place to go. So I want to make sure we're taking that into account here in a way that makes sense. So I don't know if you have ideas, Jeff, on how we could do that.
With, with regard to short-term tenancies, you mean?
No, I mean, it could be a six-month tenancy, right? So someone had a six-month tenancy and the owner was coming back from wherever they were, or the owner leased it to someone else when that tenancy was over and now the people said, well, we want to stay because we don't want to have to go back wherever we were. And so you have someone else who has a lease on the building or the owner moving into their own unit.
Well, that would certainly be an issue if we extended this ordinance to no-fault evictions because the, the version of the ordinance that I saw from, I believe, San Mateo County prevented no-fault evictions or terminations of leases. And so if you had a returning homeowner, then the ordinance would, would present a problem for that, that returning homeowner under that ordinance. The current ordinance wouldn't, wouldn't be a problem because that wouldn't be related to a COVID-related lack of payment.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think if it's, you know, it would have to be something before this, right? Like, you know, it's not a lease that gets entered into after we pass this to someone else. But I think if there was something pre-existing, I think we want to make sure that we didn't create a situation where someone who had the lease couldn't move in because, and they don't have a place to live anymore. I'm not sure of the right way to fix it, but that, that was the one thing I wanted to raise, Mayor Protem Holstich, I think you're looking.
Well, I just wanted to say, so I'm trying to figure out your point if it's on this point. But we're debating something that's very broad, but I think the only edit that was suggested was this addition that no landlord shall exercise an eviction notice, you know, we could say for cause during the local emergency period based on the presence of unauthorized occupants, pets. This is nuisance. We could further define that related to COVID-19. So it sounded to me like we're debating something very broad, like banning all evictions, which no one's proposing.
Right.
So I just wanted to be clear.
No, I know that we're not doing that. I just wanted to raise this as.
I know you, yeah, you weren't. So then is that a separate issue that you're raising?
Yeah, I mean, it's related. So I thought, right, if someone already has a lease for the unit at the end of someone else's lease, or they were moving back to their own residence, they would be able to do so.
The problem is that the state and the courts, you know, have decided, independent of us, that UDs, the unlawful detainers or eviction actions are stalled in court because, because.
Yes.
Closed unless there's an emergency. I think they're hearing emergency UDs. The city attorney, I think, has more information about specifically. So, so that's a hard situation that I don't know how we get around because the courts are sort of controlling like what can come forward. But I agree with you. We don't want the situation you described at all to fall within our ordinance.
Yeah, that's all. I realize it may be hard to get anyone out anyway right now.
Yeah.
But I don't want us to say that that's okay, right, in that situation.
I agree.
So, so was there consensus or at least four-fifths consensus on the issue of adding the language regarding evictions for, for those other enumerated reasons?
If related to COVID-19, I think.
Great.
Yeah. Is everyone good with that?
Can I ask a question on that? So, you know, I've been a tenant most of my life. And, you know, I move into a building that has no pets because maybe I'm allergic to pets. And somebody decides to get a puppy that barks all night long. Are you stripping me of my rights, you, you know, as a tenant in the next building or the next unit on somebody who's disturbing the peace and making my quality of life go down?
I, I think we're looking at it more narrowly than that. We're not just saying, oh, all the, none of the rules apply anymore and you can get a dog just because. It's, it's related to, for instance, my mother, what if she got sick and she couldn't take care of her, her pets anymore? And if somebody needs to take care of the pets because there's literally nobody to do it, then maybe I would have them temporarily to, to take care of them, something like that. So.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I, I get what you're saying. It would be very, this would be very temporary.
Jeff, I.
Great, thank you.
Uh, yeah, I was, was planning to raise this later, but I'll bring it now. What we really need to have here is mediation taking place to ensure that there's conversation. The example that council member Garner brings up is very likely to happen. That we are going to see families that are going to have to step in and provided it's on a temporary basis, then they need to be able to have that kind of relief. But it's not an excuse to just break all of the rules. And for us to try to anticipate every single situation is, is just really impossible. But if we define that as a part of this process, there needs to be a conversation that takes place between the renter and the landlord. And if that doesn't work, there needs to be an agreement that they will mediate. Then, then I think we have a chance to work this out. And I have spoken with Dave Barron, who's partner with S B E M P. And they are willing, he's willing, already has five attorneys who, in addition to himself, if I got the count right, who are willing to act on a voluntary pro bono basis to do mediation. So I, I would like to see that, that become a part of this process so that we ensure there is conversation in good faith taking place between landlords and renters and that we have someone who can dig into the unique circumstances that are going to happen. that are going to happen uh, in hundreds of different ways.
I think that's great. I would love to, to have that. Um, obviously, I know those attorneys and they're wonderful people. So, um, I, I think it would be wonderful to keep that dialogue open, to assist in, in that process. Um, and I, and I, what I really like about it, uh, Councilmember Middleton, is that it's allowing us to, to maybe list a couple of these things where they're very obvious, like the pets and the extra people. Um, but then, if something else does come up, we have someone that can address those issues and work, work with the, the tenant and the landlord. So I, I think it would be great to include that in the, in this. Thank you.
So would it be, just so we're clear, it would encourage mediation uh, through a list of attorneys who have volunteered to do it, that people can find on our website? It wouldn't be mandating mediation, or it wouldn't be- And the mediator couldn't make a decision, they would just try and bring the parties together? Or they'd be more like an arbitrator, are you thinking? Just trying to understand.
I think trying to go to arbitration is a really difficult uh-
I agree. I just want to make sure I understand what, what- So it'd just be a voluntary mediation if all the parties do?
An arbitrator and a mediator. Uh, what I think we should have is before you can uh, at some point in time, you have to in- uh, involve the mediator. And we should bring that in as early as we possibly can. You can't evict until you have uh, sat down with a mediator. Uh, and you can't fail to pay rent for months at a time without sitting down with the mediator.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we need a lot of clarity, having um, done so many mediations. You know, one side is going to be much more sophisticated than the other. One side is going to probably have an attorney. Um, so I, if we're going to require mediation, we really need to have really specifics on it, on it. Know that we have enough attorneys to do it. Who's going to manage it for the city? There's a whole bunch of things. I'm not opposed to it, but I don't think we can come up with a whole mediation rule and process right now, unless you have a proposal on that. Like, who's going to manage it? Is it, are we sending this to the city clerk? Are we sending it to the U.R.I.S. Commission? Just how is it going to work, I guess? I'm open to it. I think mediation's great. I think people should talk to each other.
If I, if I can, because I think I have a one solution, um. Yeah, I completely agree mediation is important. Um, it can be costly and unfair, um, but I, I agree, we want everyone working together. So, um, Daryl Terrell submitted in the public comments um, a section, which I think at least gets to part of this point, um, which he added in Section E. Um, however, the tenant and landlord may, prior to the expiration of the local emergency period, um, or within X amount of days of the first missed rent period, mutually agree to a plan for repayment of unpaid rent, you know, selected from options promulgated by the Community and Economic Development Department for that purpose. So, to me, I, I like the option of specifying in the ordinance that we want landlords and tenants to come to mutually agreed-upon resolutions. We want them to talk, we want them to mediate it and figure it out. Mediation's not for everyone, so I don't think we should mandate it, because that's super burdensome. Because a lot of people are just going to informally figure it out, because they have good relationships and they're good landlords and tenants. Um, so I think that that proposal, to me, at least solves part of that problem. And then for the other part, um, I'm really open to, that's why I raised the Fair Housing Council, which is the agency we pay to mediate cases, and they're effective in mediating them, um, thinking through how to use them, or how to use. I know we have an appeals board with people who've offered to mediate, um, thinking that through kind of later as we cite um, options that might be available for folks.
I'm a big believer in mediation. It doesn't work in every instance. Uh, it requires good faith on both sides, and most particularly uh, requires a mediator who knows how to reach both sides. Uh, but uh, uh, once people start talking, they tend to come through agreements. And the really hard part is getting individuals past the distrust uh, that existed, otherwise they wouldn't need the mediator. The mediator's job is to break down that mistrust and get the two parties uh, to uh, to find a solution.
Counselor-
Yeah, and I, I thought that language Daryl sent was good. Um, you know, I think the city can maintain a list of attorneys, retired attorneys, retired judges, who are willing to serve in voluntary mediations pro bono that we can make available and send to landlords and make sure, you know, tenants have access to that the best we can as well.
The court has a voluntary mediation program the first Friday of, of every month. And they have, I think, 20 or 30 attorneys who volunteer for that program, and now they're out of work. So we could work with the county, um, the list of those judges and attorneys um, who could help mediate cases professionally for free, um, as well.
That's great.
If we're trying to put this in, if we're trying to pass our ordinance as an emergency ordinance tonight, my question is, how, are we going to try and put that into here, or just make that an advice thing on the side?
I would propose we use the language that I just read. Um, and then, because it cites a list promulgated by the city, um, and then we can provide that list to a later date.
And, and also use the Fair Housing Council.
Yeah.
Well, okay.
Yeah, we can include all those resources. Yeah, I think that's great.
Okay, we can add that.
Right.
Next point?
I think I raised all of my issues or points. So I don't know if anybody has anything else to add, or else I think we might, might be good.
Yeah, you covered everything that I had, so thank you. Between you and Mayor Proten, you covered all the issues, so thank you.
Let me just look if we can have a few minutes to look at our lists. And I know we got a lot of public comment here. Um, I had polled the Southern California Rental Housing Association, which asked for specifics. Um, and then the Cal- California Partnership, which had asked for specifics. Um, so just give me a minute to review those and see if we left anything out. That's okay.
To clarify, everything that we have talked about uh, tonight applies equally to commercial and residential, unless it has been specifically defined differently between commercial and residential. Is that correct?
Yes. Although, to that point, um, are there things that we didn't specify that we need to specify for commercial? Um, I would imagine, for instance, uh, you, oh, well, you can't, we wouldn't be hav- I don't know. I, I mean, I would hope that we wouldn't be having uh, business owners needing to move into their commercial residence, commercial locations. I don't think that we need to include um, those types of things. But I think that, of course, makes sense that the pets and the extra people wouldn't apply there. Do you want to go through the chart and just summarize? I don't know if staff's got it, or if we should just summarize um, what the consensus was on each of those? Um, or just look at them and see if there's any differences for commercial? Or, I don't know, staff, do you need more clarity around each change?
Before we leave the commercial, uh, I'm good with uh, with what we've got here, and knowing that it's going to apply to commercial. Uh, but uh, one of the absolute treasures of Palm Springs is the small, independent, locally-owned businesses that we have that are people who uh, not simply run the business, but they're a part of our community and live here. And uh, I'm not sure that we have done as much as we need to do uh, to make uh, uh, certain that the business community that we had on March 1st still has a chance to uh, survive uh, at the end of this crisis. And so, uh, I think we need to come back at a future meeting and talk very specifically with the business community as to what do they need? And how do we ensure that uh, businesses, their landlords, and their lenders are working together?
Yeah, no, I agree. And I think part of, part of whatever motion, just so you have it, Anthony, is that the council sends a letter to our federal and state representatives and the governor about um, getting the same relief for uh, commercial landlords as for residential landlords, because that's going to really help if they can delay there. And a number of commercial landlords have gotten that ability to move the mortgages to the end of their mortgage, which makes it a lot easier for them to have flexibility with the businesses. Uh, so that's going to be key. And the businesses just don't have, you know, you, you, you can't get money out of someone who is not having any income right now. And so thi- this will help our, those small local businesses especially. Some of the national, you know, chains can afford to pay their rent, but the local ones, they, this is when they make most of their money. And if this is expected to go through June, and then we have the summer, it's going to be really, really hard if they don't get more time on that rent check. So, I think it's a really important point.
I agree, um, if I can jump in. And I was also wondering if we should send a letter to the County Board of Supervisors. The county has a lot of authority here um, to help our residents and small businesses um, that they have not yet exercised. Um, so for example, lots of us have property taxes due um, coming up. Um, the county could defer those um, for a period of time. I mean, businesses or landlords have tens of thousands of dollars, um, if not more, in property taxes they are required to pay for the county. Um, I think the county should also consider um, you know, rent relief, but also economic relief programs that we've discussed, that we just don't have the budget necessarily to do, um, but that the county does. Um, and so I, I completely agree with the letter requesting about mortgages, um, deferrals for, for everyone. But I'd ask that we also consider a letter to the County Board of Supervisors um, about property tax, um, economic relief for residents and businesses, rent relief. Um, they, you know, could do a rental assistance program in a way that we couldn't.
Yeah, I think we want to advocate that at all those levels.
Yeah, that'd be great. One last thing, I'm looking at Daryl Terrell's list. Um, and he, he actually defined, or he excluded from commercial, commercial tenants, um, multinational companies, publicly traded companies, or companies that employ, employ more than 500 people, uh, which I just thought was interesting. I don't know if the city attorney, if that's something that, that we could do. Um, i- it is concerning during the pandemic that, you know, a lot of our small businesses have had to close, yet a lot of chains um, are able or allowed to stay open based on the state orders or because of their size and ability to pay. A lot of companies are doing well in this. So, I don't know, I just was interested in an ability to think through if there are, you know, businesses that, that would be exempted.
Uh, yeah, I saw that. I, it was very creative. I can't say that I've seen it in the dozens and dozens of other ordinances that I have reviewed. Um, and I think there would be a legal nexus uh, in terms of what you're doing, if you wanted to add some sort of language like that.
It could be that our income loss already kind of addresses that in a way, because, you know, large companies who are still essential aren't going to have the income loss necessarily to show to not pay rent. But I just want to make sure we're not harming our local landlords um, when they have big multinational corporations as, as tenants. Do you think that the way that we define the financial impact solves for that already?
I do. Um, you know, while this certainly narrows the area of protection, um, I think that, I think that even without this ordinance, the, the protections in the definitions would, would probably adequately cover the, the issue that's trying to be mitigated here.
I mean, is it, right, and it's financial impact due to COVID-19, does it also sort of include sort of an inability to pay anything, right? We know multinational corporations don't have the inability to pay. So maybe, is that clear that we can, or can we add that language?
Pres- presumably, but remember, this pandemic is worldwide. It's not limited to California, the nation, or, or America.
Right, but some of them do, some may not, right? So, we know for, you know, certain big box stores are allowed to stay open. Um, you know, we know certain stores that are, actually, their stocks are going up. So, arguing they have an inability to pay might be tough, even if they're not making as much money as usual.
Yeah, I think that's probably good enough.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Inability to pay as a criteria.
I think that works. Uh, I, there was a, just one thing, that I looked at a, a bunch of other, I think a lot of us have been looking at a bunch of other ordinances as well. And in one from San Mateo, and I've seen this in some other places, I think even Cathedral City had it as well, was just a remedies section that basically said that um, if a landlord did not follow this and a tenant was evicted for, for reasons that they shouldn't have been evicted, then they could um, file a civil suit.
Yes, the-
I don't know, Jeff?
Uh, yes, uh, Councilmember Garner, the, the San Mateo uh, ordinance contained some pretty strongly worded language that would enable a tenant to bring an action. Uh, and for a violation of this ordinance, or their ordinance, if successful, the tenant would be entitled to their attorney's fees, as well as trouble damages. Uh, and the damages that that, that ordinance included, included um, emotional distress and, and other non-economic damages. Uh, and so it, it was, um, it was in addition to what, what's before you, if, if you want to add that type of language.
I don't know if anyone else has thoughts on that? I'd very much like to, would like to see a remedies section, just so that it's enforceable. Otherwise, you know, if it's not enforceable and there's no remedy for violation, it's, what's the point?
Sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to suggest that the, the current ordinance before you doesn't have any remedies. It does. Uh, the, the ordinance that before, that's before you grants a defense to the tenant if an unlawful detainee or action is commenced in violation of the ordinance. It also provides that violation of the ordinance is a municipal code violation that the city could prosecute. So, there, there are remedies, uh, it's just San Mateos go above and beyond what's provided.
I support um, something similar to San Mateo. I think for ours, an eviction defense is fine, but it, a lot of people get a leave or get evicted before they ever make it to court, and the courts are going to be really backlogged, and landlords are just going to negotiate. So a defense to a UD doesn't help tenants that much, um, in my opinion. And I think we want the civil courts dealing with these cases all at once, and we don't want the city to have to-
Well, we don't have, yes. We're not likely to prosecute them.
At a ver- we've got a moratorium on evictions. There is a very strong incentive for landlords to work with their tenants.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think you need to have some enforceability because to get a lawyer to bring a case, they're not going to do it for a low-income person unless they get attorney fees, and that's only if they win. So no one's going to take a case they don't think is really strong because they're putting all that time in with no, for no money unless they win. So I, I think you need that kind of provision, so I would support that.
I think that if, if, like our city attorney said, it is much stronger if people wanted to adjust that, that would make sense to me. But I do think that it's nice that it's just very clear that there is something that can be done for not following.
Dennis, you're on me. I see your lips moving, though.
Could, and, and the lawyers amongst us could help me out here. Could, would mediation be part of the remedies as well?
Yeah, I mean, I think typically, right? Basically tend to go to, usually judges will order mediation before they take a case to trial. That's just typical in, in any of these. I think we'll see more of that if the courts are backlogged.
I, I think, yeah, I think mediation can be part of it, and I think, you know, one of the things it says here is acting in knowing violation of the ordinance or in reckless disregard of the ordinance.
That's strong.
So it wouldn't be for a landlord that didn't know about it or didn't hear about it and had made a, a mistake. It would be somebody who was truly trying to be terrible.
No, I'm fine. I think we can include requiring mediation first as long as it's pro bono, right? Because most, if you have a paid mediator, the tenant's not going to be able to afford that. But if we can get a pre-mediation through the court or another means, I think we can see that should happen first to the extent possible.
So for, go ahead.
I was going to say, that's an important point. I think the council previously agreed to add Mr. Terrell's language regarding voluntary mediation. If you're going to require mediation, the council should consider the fact that that's going to cost money for both parties, including the tenant, both in terms of actual dollars as well as time away from, from work. And so you may want to stick with Mr. Terrell's language.
Yeah, I would, I don't need to specifically call out mediation and remedies. Any civil case is required to go through alternative dispute resolution, and the court has an extensive mediation program where there's free mediation, there's paid mediation depending on the value of your case. So the court's already got that figured out. It's already required to do mediation before you go to trial, so, or before, you know, when you first step into court, you're dealing with those issues. So, and they're going to first set you, send you to mediation. So that's separate and apart, I think just, yeah, I would support Mr. Terrell's language recommending mediation.
So, so is there a direction to add the more stringent remedies from the San Mateo model?
Yes, for me.
Yeah, I would.
I'm not sure I stand, you're going to have to read it to me again.
Okay, I can, I can read it. "In the event of a violation of this ordinance, an aggrieved tenant may institute a civil proceeding for injunctive relief, money damages of not less than three times actual damages, including damages for mental or emotional distress as specified below, and whatever other relief the court deems appropriate. In the case of an award of damages for mental or emotional distress, said award shall only be trebled three times if the trier of fact finds that the landlord acted in knowing violation of or in reckless disregard of this ordinance. The prevailing party shall be entitled to reasonable attorney's fees and costs pursuant to order of the court. The remedy available under this section shall be in addition to any other existing remedies that may be available to tenant under local, state, or federal law. In addition, this ordinance grants a defense to eviction to any unlawful detainer actions in violation of this ordinance."
The standard requires that the landlord acted in knowing disregard.
In order to get the triple damages from the tenant, yes.
They would be able to further prolong an eviction. I'm struggling with this one.
Yeah, so, just so I'm clear, the attorney's fees go to the prevailing party, right? So if a tenant brought an action and lost, they're on the hook for attorney's fees, right?
Correct.
Which, it's going to have to be a pretty strong case before any attorney is going to take that on.
Are there any damages or remedies to a landlord where the renter is acting in knowing disregard?
Under, under what, under the draft ordinance?
Under any of these proposals.
Only the, only the San Mateo model.
And that applies equally to both sides?
It actually only allows a tenant to bring these types of actions. It, it assumes that the context that this is normally going to be raised in is an eviction action that's brought against a landlord. But what San Mateo says, in addition to being able to, the tenant being able to raise it as a defense, a tenant could just bring an action against a landlord on their own.
Yeah, I'm struggling with this in that this strikes me as something that is not emergency-related, but is an underlying desire to make changes in the relationships that exist between landlords and tenants. And I, and there clearly have been injustices that have been done, but is this the appropriate place to be dealing with, with all of those contingencies?
Just so we're clear, and that I'm clear, that, that would only apply, those cases would only apply if it's COVID-19 related, correct? Jeff?
Um.
We're not, we're not talking about general, changing landlord-tenant law, or are we? I'm assuming this is only related to the COVID-19 evictions?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
You know, I think, if I can, I would support, I think that the remedy is written very strongly, in part, and I don't think it's addressing just general landlord-tenant law. The reason for this is because if there's no, essentially, in my opinion, there's not a lot of remedy for tenant. Any landlord can sue a tenant for an eviction, right? And so, you know, depending on the facts, but they can bring an eviction action. And so our ordinance only allows a defense in an eviction action. It doesn't allow for a tenant to take any action. And because of the lack of legal access for people and the lack of attorneys, and I was laughing when the mayor said that because I do think it'll be very difficult to even get an attorney to, to do anything about this. But I, I do think it's important to have a remedy to protect both sides, and both sides would have an avenue to pursue. I do think that the, that the remedy is written quite strongly. So I think that you could put in just like, in the event of a knowing violation or a, you could put some intent there, so it's not just every single violation could be litigated, because obviously I don't think we want that. We want our good landlords and good tenants to work with each other, and we don't want people suing each other over that. So maybe, I don't know if the city attorney agrees with the scope of the remedy, and you might have some recommendations about what language you might use.
Well, if, if you want to soften the ability to get the treble damages of mental or emotional distress, you could make it a willful violation instead of, instead of a knowing violation. The other option is to remove the, the obligation to get mental or emotional distress damages because the, those are invariably going to be difficult issues to, to try and, and litigate.
Feels like we're putting you through a law school exam.
I know.
Maybe a reasonable, and again, the council can always tweak this ordinance later if they, if they find that it's not working, but maybe a reasonable compromise would be to remove that paren, the parenthetical regarding the emotional damages or mental, mental distress damages, so that you are creating a right of action on the part of tenants and including the attorney's fees to the prevailing party so that, that there's, you know, somewhat of fairness if somebody needs to bring an action against a landlord.
One problem is I'm trying to think through what the damages would be.
All right.
If any, so they want injunctive relief, they would want to stop the landlord from pursuing that action, monetary damages, and the actual damages. You know, it says including damages for mental and emotional stress, so maybe that's fine, but you do need to put in sufficient that any, someone could pursue it. But I would agree with you, the treble damages is a lot.
We can take that out, if that one, get everyone there. The treble damages.
Is there, is there consensus on that, or at least four fifths consensus? Okay.
I like the, the term willful as a standard.
So do you have everything you need, Jeff?
I think so. Unless there's, I'll go ahead and identify what the changes that I, that I've heard are. First, there would be correspondence to the governor and to the county to address foreclosures, evictions, taxes, other relief mechanisms.
And let's send it to our congressman as well, on the federal side.
The notification from the tenant would be within 15 days after rent is due for residential and within seven days for commercial. We would have, we would require documentation by the tenant if requested by the landlord. We would include within the definition of financial impacts, in addition to loss of income, increase in expenses for both residential and commercial. In addition to tenants being sick as a reason, it would also include experiencing symptoms of, of COVID-19 as a reason for loss of income. The 120-day time period to repay would be changed to 180 days, six months. Because the last section subdivision H was drafted before the governor's order, I would recommend that we change the language to, to provide that the effectiveness of this ordinance can be changed to the extent that any other future state or federal action preempts this ordinance. The council wanted us to add language regarding the credit to the tenant's rent obligations based on any government assistance that's received by the landlords. Adding Mr. Terrell's language regarding mediation, as well as the language regarding other causes for eviction. And also adding the San Mateo language regarding remedies with the exception of treble damages and changing the knowing state of mind to willful state of mind. And I believe that is it, unless council remembers anything that I didn't catch.
Sorry, I, I don't know, did I miss the part about the pretextual related to people and pets?
Yes, that was, that was in Mr. Terrell's language, yes.
Oh, oh, okay. Okay, we're clear. I think you've got it.
Yes.
I did have one thing, though, that I did want to discuss, would just be about notice to tenants and how to get this information out there, but maybe we can vote and then talk about it, or however you want, Mayor.
I have a question. Can somebody define, and I think we went through this when, when Christie was talking, but trouble, trouble damages, does somebody have a short definition for that?
It's three times. Trouble means three times, so we're removing that.
Oh, just three times?
Yeah, so.
I checked that out.
Correct.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Sure. I think we probably should do it while the items open, as in, so how we get this notice out, both, I think landlords and tenants, right?
Right. I mean, is it something that we could send a notice in the mail? Do we have, I know we have information, right, for renters, because now we're providing notice to renters as well, so something that someone could get a letter in the mail saying that this is the ordinance, here's what, here's what it means briefly, and here's where you can find the full thing.
I'm not certain that information is readily available. It may just have to be a general notice, and we put the word out, you know, social media platforms, et cetera. I, I don't know that we would be able to directly notify everyone in any meaningful and timely manner, specifically.
Okay, but we could do, I mean, news outreach in English and in Spanish.
Yes.
Radio and all that, I mean, just some representative discussing it.
Yes, that, that would, that would, that would be easy to do.
Okay.
Great.
I know that we've, we've been including a lot of resources on our website, so I assume that we'll do this too. I saw that the city of Indio sent out, though they haven't passed any ordinance, and they just have the state one, but they, they sent out and put on their website a form letter to landlords or tenants. But I'm wondering if we can include resources on our website, like the list of mediators and things like that, that would be helpful.
Sure, that's easy, that's easy to do.
Yeah, and if we maybe have a little box on, on the homepage, because everyone's getting a mail or every address in the city to go to the website with a phone number. So I think having it on the homepage would be really helpful as well.
I agree, that'd be helpful. Go ahead.
I know, I just think when we're talking about the resources on the page, going along with what Councilmember Middleton has been talking about this evening, is just making sure that we're promoting conversation and good faith between the parties. That's kind of our point, and making sure that message is out there.
One thing that might be really helpful that the Fair Housing Council could do, I mean, I'll defer to city staff here because I don't want to get, giving legal advice to anyone, but the Fair Housing Council might have a draft settlement form or payment plan form or something like that, that tenants and landlords could use, which might be really helpful, because I know it's really hard for people to come up with something that's legally binding, and there's, you know, not a lot of lawyers who are working on these, there's no lawyers who are working on these cases right now. So I'm wondering if that, something like that, like just resources, and I'd offer to help create or find resources for that website, that we could offer sample documents for people to use, if that's allowed.
Yeah, I think through those, through those organizations, I think that would be useful.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
That'd be great. I have one nitpick issue. I'm so sorry, but it is people's lives and I'm very thoughtful about what it'll look like in court when we litigate these cases. So the willful requirement for the remedy, I think is probably too strong. I don't think any attorney or personally I wouldn't take a case that required a tenant, someone bringing a lawsuit to prove willful violation of an ordinance. It's just, I think, very difficult. I might ask that we compromise with like a knowing or a--
Knowing or will. Can we end up with knowing or willful?
When Jeff read it, he said willful, but I don't see there was consensus on that.
Got it. I mean, if someone knows they're breaking the law.
Probably good enough.
Point of willful is that there is an intent to break the law.
So Jeff, from a legal point of view, if you know you're breaking the law--
That's willful, knowing is just knowing the facts that are before you, so.
So do you have a recommendation about which one we should use?
Well, because we took out the trouble damages, I think having a knowing violation would probably be sufficient. It's not going to result in that high of damages relative to the actual damages, so knowing seems reasonable in my legal opinion.
And willful is usually for punitive damages, even though I think they're very similar in a lot of ways from a jury's point of view?
Knowing requires, and this is a question for the city attorney, that's just not simply that the law has been written. You've got to be able to demonstrate that the individual knew what the law was and ignored it.
That's what willful is. Knowing is just having knowledge of the facts, the factual circumstances, that they had a tenant, that, you know, what the source of non-payment was, that's what knowing is. Willful is also having, also knowing what the law is, and so it's worse.
So we may have a difference of opinion here.
I'm open to what others think here. Technical legal thing.
No, no, my concern with willful, if it's not with punitive damages, is to try and prove that someone had read something about the law is almost impossible, right? I mean, if you're a landlord and we're doing all the media outreach we're doing, you could say, well, I just never knew that and how does a tenant possibly prove that? You can prove that you knew the facts, you knew that I reached out to you, you knew that I said I couldn't pay for these reasons. Willful's, and that's why willful is usually with punitive damages because it's really hard to prove that someone willfully knew as opposed to knowingly knew. I think willful sounds as a better word, but the way Jeff explained it, which takes me back many years, I just think knowing is better here because we're not going for a punitive penalty, you're just paying the damages. It's okay if we have a difference, that's okay too. Explaining my thinking.
We typically don't add intent to our municipal ordinances, so it's pretty rare that we're adding any qualifier here. I don't know, is that right? But typically, we just have violation of the law as a violation of the law. We don't require specific intent like you would, you know, it's already included in that. I'm sorry, it's late, is that right? So in terms of adding a qualifier versus just putting a violation of the ordinance.
You're correct that most municipal code violations are considered strict liability to the extent they're health and safety related unless we specifically say otherwise. Again, my recommendation at this late hour would be to include the word knowing, that I think that seems like a reasonable mental state, given the fact that, again, we are taking out the trouble damages, in my opinion.
I want to see if there's a motion in a second and we'll see where we are. And we'll go from there.
I motion.
Okay, motion, Councilmember Garner. Second, Mayor Pro Tim Holstich. And this would be with a knowing.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
No.
Councilmember Woods.
No.
Mayor Coors.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Holstich.
Yes.
Motion does not pass, three to two.
I would just like a little more discussion, and I'm sorry coming from a pedestrian point of view on knowing versus willful. And so it doesn't mean the motion can't be remade, I just, I've been listening and trying to understand the differences between the two.
Yeah, I would like to get to something that we can agree to as well.
So Jeff, can you maybe talk about what is normally in health and safety with the municipal law? What extra burden knowing adds and then what extra burden willful would add?
Yes, so the normal standard for most municipal code violations, health and safety related, is strict liability. Regardless of what you know or what the facts are that you know, you can be held liable. A knowing standard requires the plaintiff to prove that the other party, the defendant, had knowledge of the facts that were in existence at the time that they committed the act. A willful mental state requires the plaintiff to prove that not only did the defendant know what those facts were, but also knew what the law was and was basically intentionally violating the law. So a willful misconduct is generally, you know, considered more morally troublesome because you, not only did you know what the facts are, you also knew that those, that what you were doing was against the law.
Jeff, can you give some examples of health and safety violations that you don't need either knowing or willful for that might be helpful for folks, including me?
Failure to get a building permit is strict liability. Having a nuisance on your property, regardless of whether you know that there's a nuisance on your property, if there is a nuisance on the property and the city can demonstrate that, the city has abatement procedures and can remedy them.
I'm trying to figure out, thank you, I'm trying to figure out in a landlord-tenant situation, how they might be different for both sides, both the landlord's side and the tenant's side. I'm just a little unclear about the difference between the two words in that context.
Yeah, it's, I don't know if the city attorney has an answer, but that was what I was trying to get at, is that it's really rare unless it's criminal law and my experience, like the civil actions don't list an intent here to pursue. And we're not litigating or adjudicating or deciding these cases. We're allowing people to bring an action to court for a remedy of a violation of this and then it would be up to the judge or a jury to decide the facts and decide the law and decide the damages. The damages in these cases, because we got rid of trouble damages, are so low that they're likely an attorney would not pursue it. And I offered the knowing, which I very much regret, as a compromise to the violation of the ordinance. And so I can't, maybe Jeff could tell you, better lawyer than me off the top of his head, but thinking through, you know, if you bring a violation of state law for habitability, you know, it doesn't require that the landlord had a knowing or willful disregard to provide an unhabitable place to live or violate any other order that tenants' rights or a landlord's rights goes back and forth. So in my own opinion, and the city attorney can give you his, it's very rare to write something like this. I thought that it might be a good compromise, but it's not typical about how we write violations of ordinances or remedies, in my personal opinion, which is not that of the city attorney.
I don't do landlord and tenant for a couple decades, but, so let me ask this to the city attorney, is there any, in our California landlord-tenant law, where anything is either knowingly or willful in order to bring a case, that you have to have that highest standard?
You have practiced more landlord-tenant law than I have, so I cannot answer that.
I don't know, I mean, we can look and see, I'm not recalling that, pursuing a claim for civil cases in general.
So I do want to point out that even a knowing standard is still hard. It's not super easy to do, to meet a knowing standard either. It seems like it is, but it's not. Yeah, I feel like it's difficult to explain when you're not kind of dealing with cases all the time with these different legal standards, but it's not as easy as it just appears on its face as we're giving you the definition. In court, it's actually still hard to meet.
Part of where I'm struggling is why do we need this in an emergency ordinance?
My reason for it was just to give this more teeth, just to say that there are consequences to not following this, we're taking this seriously. We want people to be acting in good faith and it's not just, if you don't do it, you don't do it, who cares? I mean, I think that's the reason for it is enforcement.
I really think in light of where we're at today, we're not likely to see that happening, but there will be a few folks, no doubt, that all of this brings out the worst in them.
The most important thing here, in my opinion, for the remedy, and I'll stop beating a dead horse, but is the award of attorney's fees for prevailing parties. So basically, the reason that there are no attorneys representing tenants here and there is inland county legal services for if you're low income, but is that there's no attorney's fees. Attorneys can't get paid to represent tenants, and so what you have is landlords who are primarily represented and you have the other party not. And so the benefit for this is that, and most agencies don't allow for attorney fees if you have a claim, a valid claim against your landlord. And so I've seen dozens of tenants in court, and that's what happens on these cases, just on these cases, that they can't get legal assistance for serious violations of these. And that's, I think, what's important is the fee shifting to whoever's the prevailing party. And that helps protect landlords as well because you have a tenant who's trying to sue you under this ordinance, but without merit, then the landlord can get the cost of the attorney's fees that they spent on the case. I think that the enforcement is what's really important and the incentive of enforcement.
I would completely agree with you. I think that sentence is much more valuable to a tenant than the nuanced distinction between knowing and willful.
I agree.
So can that distinction be put in, into it, or?
Put into what?
Into the remediation part of it.
I guess what I'm suggesting is, as a practical matter, if a tenant is able to demonstrate knowing violations, they will probably be able to demonstrate willful violations because there's a presumption in American law that you're presumed to know what the law is and we're going to do such a media blitz that it's going to be very difficult for a landlord to claim that they didn't know what the law was. So we're really, you know, debating something that probably isn't as important as Mayor Pro Tim Holstich mentioned is the attorney's fees provision, which is in there.
It's getting late, I can agree with that.
Bringing people down, which is not the right answer.
Councilmember Woods can come around, I can as well.
Yeah, you know, I thank you all for my ignorance between those two words and what that means, so I really appreciate the input and knowingly, I can go with knowingly. It seems like it's splitting hairs and I just didn't know that that was the case. So maybe somebody wants to make a motion again.
I'll make the motion. If we have consensus, it sounds like we have votes for that. Can we just do a full motion for all of the--
Yeah, the whole thing.
Yes.
Whole thing. I was like, please don't make us do another motion.
I thought the other was for the whole thing too, by the way.
It was. I thought it was. Thank you.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Garner, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holstich.
Councilmember Garner.
Wait, did you do any clarification?
No clarification, just we're using knowing, knowingly.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner, yes. Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Coors?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero, and I do need to read the ordinance title, an urgency ordinance of the City of Palm Springs, California enacting a temporary moratorium on evictions due to non-payment of rent from tenants where failure to pay rent results from income loss resulting from the novel coronavirus COVID-19 and setting forth the facts constituting such urgency.
And that goes into effect immediately?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have one more. The next item is item 5A, consideration of adopting a resolution consenting to the enforcement of all health laws within the City of Palm Springs by the Riverside County Health Officer.
Yes, Mayor, and council members, as I mentioned earlier today, the County of Riverside has contacted all of the cities within the county, asking them if there's any doubt about whether the county health officer has authority within jurisdictions to adopt either a resolution or an ordinance. The City of Palm Springs currently has several locations in our municipal code that do designate the county health officer as the city health officer. However, to avoid any doubt, we're recommending that this resolution be adopted, which would designate the county health officer, and you'll be happy to note that it does not contain any men's Rea requirements, so we can avoid that discussion.
Okay, any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
So move?
Second. Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Holstich, Councilmember Middleton.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Holstich.
Yes.
Mayor Coors.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, the next item is public agenda on, public agenda items, public comment on non-agenda items.
Mayor...
Public to address the city council on items of general interest within subject matter.
Mayor, before we go there, there is one item that I do need to call your attention to before we put a comment. As you recall, the emergency order was set to expire at the end of this meeting. So this is what I would recommend. Obviously, the county and state order is in effect, which would cover it. Or for those that doesn't cover it, I will put into effect the order as I did previously, with city council then to formally approve it or modify it at the next meeting on April 23rd. So I just wanted to make sure council was aware of that transition.
Yes, so our order goes, well, there are a couple things we've done beyond the state, potentially, or county, so you can do that in a order on your own that will then ratify.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have any public...
We do have one public comment. One second.
Thank you.
Hi, Dave, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council. You have two minutes to begin your comment.
Okay, let me turn down the volume here. Okay, the volume is off. Okay, good evening, council members, mayor, sorry to do this to you late. Quickly, the police chief, is there background noise here? Is it clear?
I can hear you clearly.
Okay, thank you. The police chief got up to talk about social distancing and enforcement on the trail. Sadly, today I saw three police people without any kind of citizen involvement within three feet of each other in an extended conversation. I'd be happy to talk to him about the details, or his deputy, the city clerk knows my phone number, but it was really disturbing. No PPE, all in a dynamic conversation together. More importantly, it was very uplifting to see that Lift to Rise has $200 grants available to people. It's also heartbreaking that it's $200. I heard the Palm Springs Foundation mentioned. It brings to mind something I've been texting and talking to some of the council members about. There are at least 500 people in this town who write five, six, and seven-figure checks to various causes all through this season, who have charitable dollars available to be given. Do we have a campaign to get those people, to get those charitable dollars into a vehicle that will be distributed, then distributed to people in need so they can get food, rent money, whatever they need? Because 200 bucks is not a lot. That's the end of my comment.
Okay, and we'll disconnect now.
Thank you.
That ends public comment. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, your volume is off.
Okay, next item is city council, city manager requests for upcoming agenda development.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, with regard to the upcoming agenda, I would make one noted change, as you see for the meeting of April 23rd. I would remove the bike share program. I don't think that's ripe, really, to come at this point, given where we are. And I would change that to discussion on the block grant, CDBG, continued discussion on that issue. And then also, we will bring the review of the, any emergency order.
Great. Anyone else have any comments?
No, just to give the public some reassurance, we are actually, staff is putting together ways that we can mitigate what could be, or will be, tremendous losses to our city budget. And that will be at the next meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Great. And also on the next agenda, as we discussed earlier, about using the Palm Springs Foundation and trying to find a nonprofit we could work with on that. I've been working with the nonprofit community and with staff on pulling together all the nonprofits, reaching out to them, on who is providing direct services with a sentence or two that we could post on the website, as well as, so people know the services they can get, as well as how people who want to donate to those organizations can donate to them directly. So we should have that up and running next week. But I think having a vehicle where people don't want to pick one organization, and you know, maybe it's working with United Way or some foundation, but if we can have, do a little looking into that by the next meeting and have a discussion of that, and see if we can make something happen, that would be appreciated.
Wanted to make note that next Wednesday, April 8th, from 10:00 to 11:30, Kelpers will be sponsoring a webinar specifically for employers on funding status. The CEO, Chief Investment Officer, multiple individuals with the investment department, as well as three members of the board, including myself, will be participating on the panel in that 90-minute session. It is open to all.
Okay, if there's nothing else, the next regular city council meeting will be held on Thursday, April 23rd, 2020, at 6:00 p.m., and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe, stay home, and have a good night.